Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the February 27th Fresno City Council Meeting of the year 2020. City Clerk, will you conduct roll call, please?
Councilmember Brettafield, Councilmember Chavez, Councilmember Sparza,
President.
Councilmember Kravati, Councilmember Soria, Vice President Capriolio,
I'm here.
President Arias.
Here.
Next, we'll go into the invocation. Pastor White, would you please come up?
Lord God, thank you for each of our representatives here today. Thank you for the way that you use them to serve the common good in our city. Thank you that Fresno has a DNA of hard work, which has led us to lead the nation in ag. God, you've given us amazing grapes and almonds, peaches, nectarines that feed over 95 countries around the world, so we're thankful for our field workers today who make that possible. Thank you for our 112 square miles and 1,700 miles of roads, which touch every neighborhood in our sphere of influence. You've given our residents a home and a way to connect to one another. Please guide us as we govern on their behalf. Give us understanding to lead with humility, courage to lead with honesty, and compassion to lead with kindness. And, Lord, would you fill us with hope today that as we govern, we can remember that you haven't given up on our city, that you love our city, and you're using each of us here today to heal this great place we call home. Thank you for entrusting us to work together for the well-being of Fresno. And, Lord, let our decisions today be marked by gratitude for our residents and hope for our future. In your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor White. Before we get started on the official council meeting, I want to make a short announcement that today's meeting will be adjourned in the memory of Ann Gaston, who recently passed away. She has a long history of being a community leader in our city. Our prayers and thoughts are with her family. City Clerk, are there any changes to the agenda?
I have several changes. The first one is File ID 20-00281, which is a proclamation of Travis Morris Day. We're adding Mayor Brand as the sponsor, along with Vice President Capriolio. Item 1G, File ID 20-00241, is being removed from the agenda, and it's a master license agreement for placement of telecommunications equipment. The next change is Item 1R, File ID 20-00248, authorizing the dissolution of the Capitol Project Oversight Board. That's going to be continued to March 5th. The next change is the 10 o'clock items, 1 and 2, File ID 20-00114 and File ID 20-00232. They are both being continued to March 5th at 10:00 a.m. The next change is File ID 20-00243, which is a 10-10 item. And the change to this item is the Resolution Number 3, Resolution Amending Residential Permit Parking District 10 Should Be Subject to the Mayor's Veto. Under File ID 20-00254, the 10:15 a.m. scheduled communication, the Speaker withdrew his request to speak. And the last change is removing Item 1U from the agenda. Those are all the changes I have.
Thank you, City Clerk. Do any councilmembers have changes to the agenda?
Yes, Council President likes to remove Item 1O.
Any other changes to the agenda from the council?
What if that was 1O, right?
Tabled. Do I have a motion to approve the ... Motion been made by Councilwoman Soria, seconded by Councilmember Capriolio to approve the remainder of the agenda. All those in favor? All right, no opposition. The agenda's approved. Now, we want to enter the ceremonial portion of our council meeting. The first proclamation up is honoring Jaclyn Trafton. Councilmember Brettafield, you have the floor.
Good morning, everybody. Jaclyn, why don't you come on up? This is Jaclyn Trafton. One of the great things we get to do is recognize people in our community who are doing great things, and great things at a young age. Jaclyn, and I have a whole list of things here, I'm not going to go through all of it, but she is currently the Miss Clovis 2019. That's a great thing in itself, but she's done a long line of service in our community for a long time. She's been involved in the Miss America Organization, has won numerous titles in the organization. She devotes 3,500 hours of community service, has already done that. Three-time Gold Presidential Service Award winner, and she just enlisted in the United States Air Force, so I'm very proud of her for that, because we love our military. And Jaclyn has done great things in our community, is going to continue to do great things. I think you're also now an active member of the 144th Fighter Wing, 194th Fighter Squadron stationed here in Fresno. So she's doing great things. I'm going to let you say a few words, and then we're going to read the proclamation. So it's all yours, Jaclyn.
Hi, everyone. This is awesome. I mean, I've grown up in Fresno my whole life, and kind of something that's been near and dear to my heart is giving back to the community. And, like I said, growing up in the Miss ... Like you said, growing up in the Miss America Organization has done a lot for me, and it's been really special. But in this past year, I wanted to do something on a whole other level, and that's why I joined the military. And one of the reasons why I joined the Air National Guard was to be here in Fresno. And I think that's so important, because Fresno has helped me in so many ways, that I want to give back, I want to serve, I want to continue my years as Miss Clovis, and to see what the future holds. And thank you, I'm happy to be here.
I think you can recognize Jaclyn. And City Clerk, if you would read the proclamation.
Whereas Jaclyn Trafton is a 2018 graduate of Clovis West High School, she is the only daughter of Scott and Jackie Trafton and has three brothers, Christopher, Valen, and Brandon. And whereas Jaclyn has earned numerous awards in the Miss America Organization, by 19 years old, Jaclyn had won six consecutive local titles in the organization. She is the current Miss Clovis 2019, former Miss Madera County 2018, Miss Delta Valley Outstanding Teen 2017, Miss Fresno County Outstanding Teen 2016, Miss Gavelin Hills Outstanding Teen 2015, and the Miss Clovis Outstanding Teen in 2014. And whereas Jaclyn has volunteered over 3,500 hours in the community and is a three-time Gold Presidential Service Award winner, she has been honored by the Fresno County Girl of Merit. And whereas, while serving as Miss Clovis, Jaclyn enlisted in the United States Air Force on October 25th, 2019, Jaclyn graduated from the Air Force Basic Military Training in San Antonio, Texas. On January 14th, 2020, Jaclyn graduated from the Air Force Technical Training in Biloxi, Mississippi. And whereas, Jaclyn is now an active member of the 144th Fighter Wing and the 194th Fighter Squadron stationed here in Fresno, California. And whereas, Jaclyn has accomplished all of this while being a great role model for those young adults who wish to emulate her and aspire to similar levels of accomplishments. And whereas, we honor and thank Jaclyn for being a dedicated citizen who gives so freely of her valuable time and energy and abilities. Now, therefore, be it resolved that we Mayor Lee Brand and the Fresno City Council do hereby ask all city residents to join us in proudly honoring and celebrating Jaclyn for her accomplishments and inspiring example of commitment to excellence. The proclamation proclaim Thursday, February 27th, 2020, to be Jaclyn Trafton Day in the City of Fresno. Congratulations.
Congratulations. And I want to also recognize her parents are here, because the fine young people that we have in our community, they don't happen by themselves, they happen because of great parenting. Good godmother here, who I met, and her great parents. So congratulations on a great job. And I understand you have a six-year commitment with the military, so that's quite a commitment. And again, congratulations on everything, Jaclyn.
Thank you.
You take care. Be well. Thanks.
Councilmember Capriolio, you have the floor.
Thank you, Council President. So, good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
You can do a little better. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I love doing that. It sets a tone here. So I'm saying that because there's a tone setter that we're going to honor in a moment with ... You'll see this video, it's really cool. First, though, we're going to do the ...
We're going to sing?
No. Can ... All right, we're going to change the order up. All right, cool. So we're going to play a short clip to show you what this is all about. This is, you know, Fresno State's by crown jewel, I've said that seven million times, and I'll say it seven million times more. I'm a proud alumni, as many of our councilmembers are. So with that in mind, we're going to play you a clip to set the scene or stage for what's about to happen. So watch the ...
(Inaudible) I thought I'd show you a video that's guaranteed to make you happy, or at least wake you up. Take a look. That goes on for about 20 more minutes. He's here today. Travis, come on down.
Hi, how's it going?
Here's a microphone.
There's my mic.
Yep. I was watching you dance from my dressing room, and you were having a good time out here. You've got a lot of energy.
Oh, man, it comes from you.
Yeah?
I watch your show all the time, I'm like, oh, I want to be like Ellen, bro. For real.
All right, well, you have more energy than I do. All right, so this video that I saw made me so happy. You're in the marching band at Fresno High School, right?
Fresno State.
Fresno State, sorry. And so, did you choose cymbals, or was there nothing left?
Okay, so, all right, all right. Yes. But here's the reason why. My first choice was cymbals, okay? Everybody at home, my first choice was cymbals. But everybody else that tries out for any other drums, if they don't make it, they go to cymbals, that's their last resort. So when people ask me, like, "Why'd you pick cymbals?" "Oh, where did you get cut from?" I'm like, "Uh, nothing."
Yeah.
Cymbals is me, like, that's what I do. And they're like, "Really?" And I'm like, "Yeah, that's me."
Yeah. So what made you want to play the cymbals?
It matches my personality. Like, I'm really loud, I'm vibrant, so anytime I get to play the cymbals, I'm like, ooh, I'm crashing crazy, that's me. My hair is going everywhere, I'm like, ooh, let's go!
Right, right. So ... So I was ...
We're good? Well, the video goes on, and Travis had his bike stolen. And so with that, Ellen, the video goes on, says, "Well, we have something for you, and it's a bike, and I think you thought it might have been maybe a motorcycle." And as I say, they go to the back, go outside, and there's a brand-new Jeep. And Travis went nuts. I mean, you think he's active there? I mean, he could have jumped over the Jeep, it was amazing, it was amazing. And so we wanted to bring that here and bring it forward today, because you, young man, have put Fresno on the map again. You gave us such good press, such a delight you are for the university and our entire city. So we wanted to honor you today, and the mayor especially. And so with that, we've got a couple of things to tell you. Travis, you are the epitome of enthusiasm. You're probably one of the world's best-known cymbal players now. And your enthusiasm is infectious, so I'm really impressed by your school spirit, what you do, and wish you the best in life. Say a few words?
Let me introduce ...
Before we do that, we'll get the boss here for a second. Steve McKeithen is our band director at Fresno State, and I think you have a couple of things to say about this young man.
Absolutely. Thanks for having us, it's a pleasure to be here. We're so proud of Travis and all that he does. And, you know, he's a very vibrant member of our marching band, we had 265 members in the band this year. And he's a great example of kind of what we are, ambassadors for the university, both in music performance, how we present ourselves in the community, community service, and all those things. And as a non-music major, he comes in and goes to our class three days a week, and we prepare material, and we get ready to perform, and that's just kind of what we do. So very proud of Travis for all that he is. He's very genuine, what you see is what you get. And we've had such a great time in the past three years, having him in the marching band, so thank you very much.
All right, I just want to thank everyone for having me here. You know, it's just a true honor just to be here right now with all you beautiful faces. I love this city so much. I grew up here my whole life, and I truly love it. And not only do I love this city, but I love music. And the fact that I get to show my passion for music through this wonderful city, through this wonderful school in Fresno State, like, I can't ask for anything more, that's a blessing in itself. So I really appreciate you all for supporting me through this whole journey that I'm going through. And you know what? Like, we're just going to keep on pushing for state, we're still going to be pushing for our city. I love it. So thank you.
All right. I'll have the Madam Clerk read the proclamation, and then we have a special moment to follow that, so you're in for a long morning. Madam Clerk?
Whereas Travis Morris is currently a junior at California State University Fresno, majoring in business marketing, and is part of the Fresno State Marching Band, where he chose the cymbals as his instrument of choice, as he felt the cymbals represented his loud and vibrant personality. And whereas, a video of the Fresno State Bulldogs' marching band cymbals player and self-proclaimed hype man, Travis went viral in November 2019 for his energy and bulldog spirit. His contagious and energetic spirit captures the audience's attention through a viral video of him playing during a Fresno State football game. This event caught the eye of many national and local media outlets, where he was featured on Good Morning America and appeared on the Ellen DeGeneres Show. And whereas, Travis has firmly embodied the Fresno State Principles of Service, Charity, and Understanding, and with his positive attitude, the Fresno State football fans have bestowed upon him the hype man of the valley. Now, therefore, be it resolved that we Mayor Lee Brand and the Fresno City Council members do hereby thank you for your dedication to providing and leading a bold, positive impact on our great city of Fresno, and for sharing the entire nation with your high-energy passion and school spirit. Be it further resolved that we Mayor Lee Brand and the Fresno City Council members do hereby proclaim February 27th, 2020, to be Travis Morris Tea Boogie Day in the City of Fresno.
One more round of applause. Now, just so you know, that video has been, I think, almost 2 million people have looked at that video. So that means 2 billion people who didn't know about Fresno State, did know about our fantastic community, now have that type of exposure and excitement. And I think, you know, you're like a master diplomat, you should probably go in the diplomacy corps or something like that, I'm telling you. So we can't compete with her with the Jeep, but we know Ellen did the best she could for you. So from our hearts to you, this is the first time ever, I'm going to present you with the key to District 4. It's never been done before, has your photos and pictures and a key with our logo, so congratulations, young man. You're an example of everything we look forward to in our students. So enjoy that, you've earned it, you've earned it.
Thank you, thank you, Steve. We appreciate you. Wow.
I watched the video again, I've watched it about probably 10 times, I just can't help but smile, and how great it is for our community. Speaking of our community, this is another organization that we want to honor this morning. And if I could have Rod Lowry come up, Executive Director, Fresno Police Chaplaincy Chief, come on up. Todd, come on up. Don't be shy. Rick, you want to come up? No?
(Inaudible).
Come on, come on, come on. Well, maybe I shouldn't have said that, I'm the shortest guy up here. Wow, I feel like Blongeong. Love you, Blongeong. Anyway, so this morning, we want to honor an event that's happening this Saturday. And it's the Support Blue Run. It's sold out again, it's 5,000 tickets, and it's a fundraiser for our police department on a community basis. This money is used in so many different ways, and it's a ... I'm proud to be part of it. In fact, I was the only councilmember here today that has been involved with this since the very moment it started. And it's an honor and a privilege for me to say that and to continue. And even though I'll be gone in 44 weeks, I'll still be there every Saturday. Not as early as you, what, 5:30, 6? Yeah.
No, no. You can still donate online, though, next year.
Perfect, we got that. We got that, we got that. So with that, I wanted to not only support this cause, but encourage my colleagues likewise to support this cause, because it's a great way to show support for our law enforcement, for our men and women in blue. And they protect us every day, every night, every minute of every day. So this is a way for us to give back in a very meaningful way. And yes, and then on Saturday, I also want to say this, Saturday, it's a fun event, so you don't have to run with my Aspen and all my stuff, so I'll be sort of trudging along short distances. So what I'm going to do is what all the kids do, because I'm a kid at heart, I'm going to go over by the helicopter and hang out there, I'm going to pet the horses, the canines are there, the motorcycle, we can sit on the motorcycle, take some photo ops and all. It's a fun, it's a fun afternoon, fun morning, fun day, and it's really, really exciting, and we need to come out and support our men and women in blue. With that, Rod, you want to say a few things?
Absolutely. I hear that Fresno County Sheriff's Department has challenged Fresno PD their bomb units. They're going to be running a two-mile race in full bomb gear. So that ought to be interesting. We're going to have plenty of water for them. I want to thank the council, your leadership and support over the years is so appreciated. I just walked in and received a phone call from one of our officers, and just things that you don't hear about, because we're not good about pounding our chest. He called and asked, hey, Rod, there was a call that came out this weekend, officers went to a home, and there were several children who were sleeping on the ground. What can we do as an agency to get beds into that home? Do I need to purchase, is there something that we can do collectively? And I said, "Hey, it's taken care of, send me the event, we'll deal with it." This is an opportunity to go out and celebrate and maybe expand your thoughts on what does policing really do? What are the potentials that policing have in our community? Because we're the tip of the spear, everyone that hurts in this city calls the Fresno Police Department, and we're getting better each day through our leadership of responding to those needs. Are you interested in being a chaplain? No? Well, let's talk afterward. Let's talk, let's talk. Man, we need that in our city. So again, I just want to thank the leadership of Fresno, it means a lot to us, that you recognize what we do under the radar, and it's just sorely appreciated. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And, you know, that's just one little story. There's literally thousands of stories through the chaplaincy and the work that they do. They never really get the credit that they deserve, your entire team, and they're great people, enjoy going and visiting and seeing and all the things that happen. So it's just our little way today to present you with this proclamation, to show further support for what you do. And it's a dangerous job, but it's a rewarding job, when we can present you with things like this, and you have the financial backing to help those in the community that are less fortunate and have a greater need. So please keep up the good work, I love it. President of the FPOA is here, Todd, and of course, the chief, and it's a team, everybody works together with a common goal, and it's amazing. So give Rod a call, and donate if you can, and show up, it's going to be a fantastic day. It's so much fun, it's a beautiful weekend to do that. And all those things are out there, you can just go up and, you know, pretend you're flying the helicopter, I do, and just have a good time, just enjoy yourself. So can we read that proclamation?
Whereas Support Blue Fresno was established by the Fresno Police Chaplaincy as a grassroots effort to broaden support for the men and women who protect our great city of Fresno. And whereas, this year's Support Blue Run is the largest and sold-out event with an incredible 5,000 participants. And whereas, these efforts provide education for our youth and community members to enhance relationships and understanding with officers in order to restore and maintain trust and mutual respect. And whereas, our police officers are mentors, familiar faces, and pillars of our community. And whereas, after four successful years, Support Blue Fresno enters its fifth year of what we hope to be many more to come. And whereas, with the support and encouragement from community sponsors, the Fresno Police Chaplaincy, and community members across Fresno, we applaud all those who stand up and run for blue this month. Now, therefore, be it resolved that we Mayor Lee Brand, the Fresno City Council members do hereby applaud the Fresno Police Chaplaincy as it leads Support Blue Fresno for continuing to broaden support for the Fresno police officers who dedicate their lives to ensuring public safety for everyone in the city of Fresno. Be it further resolved that we Mayor Lee Brand and the Fresno City Council members do hereby proclaim Saturday, February 29th, 2020, to be Support Blue Fresno Day in the City of Fresno.
Thank you. I forgot to invite the team members down here, I'm sorry about that, but there's many more at the office that do such great things for the community. So thank you all for supporting them, and I'll see you Saturday. We're going to have a great time.
Thank you, Council Vice President Capriolio. Next, we're going to take on the councilmember reports and comments. Any councilmembers wishing to speak? Councilmember Kravati, you're punched up.
Thank you, Mr. President. Okay, I'm going to start on a positive note. I'm so glad to see Rod Lowry here, if he's still here, maybe he walked out, and the chaplaincy. I will be participating in the Support Blue Run this Saturday, though it's going to be a Support Blue jog with me. You know, I want to thank the Vice President for bringing them up here and recognizing them, because he's right, they're not recognized a lot. One thing I will say is, there is a gap in the need for this community when it comes to kids that face trauma. Oftentimes, that point of contact is through PD, and they see kids who face trauma, and the chaplaincy, in a secular way, fills that gap. And one of my goals for this next year is to support their resiliency program, because that program is a model for the entire country. No other community has that. And when we talk about community policing and trying to improve the quality of public safety, that also, there has to be a conversation about the desire of our officers to make sure that when they leave a call, that there's going to be a support group that goes out there to help children and families that are in crisis. So I want to thank the chaplaincy and Rod Lowry for continuing to set the example for the entire nation. On a unfortunately not-so-great note, there was a shooting in my district, there was a homicide on President's Day, and it happens all over this city, but when it's 2:30 in a park, people get really upset, and they should. And, you know, once the shooting happened, you know, we had a neighborhood meeting a few days later. I want to thank Deputy Chief Phil Cooley for coming out there, as well as the Lieutenant from Northwest Fresno, and the Sergeant for listening to residents and their concerns. We want to keep that park open, it's a treasure for this entire city, because it offers a great view of the nation's second-largest river, the San Joaquin River, and it's an important public access point. The residents made some really great suggestions, so since then, we temporarily closed off to vehicle traffic that park, but that was to allow the family of the victim to mourn, because they had a makeshift memorial, and also to make security upgrades. So my office, funded by taxpayer dollars, paid for the lighting, and we're going to make some changes to the shrubbery and vegetation so there's more visibility in the area, and we're looking at long-term goals. And the community really stepped up, and they're going to have a neighborhood night out, day at, the Milburn Lookout. But more importantly, I want to thank not only our Public Safety, your Chief Hall, I want to thank the city manager, I want to thank TJ Miller from the Parks Department, Scott Mosier from Public Works, because as soon as this happened, I called you, and you guys were just on it, and you were helping me to help my neighborhoods, and that means so much to me to have that cooperation. Lastly, last night, so my fiancee's a teacher at Tronas Middle School in Luis Chavez's district, there was a water main break, and the entire street was flooded by the school. And of course, I texted Wilma, and within moments, staff was out there. I want to thank Public Works, Public Utilities, for being on it and making sure that our kids were safe. So those are my reports, thank you.
Councilmembers Sparza, Soria, then Brettafield.
So just a couple very brief updates. Yesterday, I had the privilege, along with the administration and the police department, to unveil our new public counter on the police, the district police station at Manchester. It's the second-to-last district station to receive a public counter. The last one will be southeast when the new facility opens. So just really, you know, glad we were able to do that and provide public access for my constituents, for the residents of central Fresno altogether, to be able to, you know, talk to an officer directly. talk to an officer directly during the hours that that public window's open. So again, our Manchester Central Policing District Station now has a public counter window for folks to go and interact with PD directly. Tomorrow, we will be planting trees in conjunction with Public Works, Keep Fresno Beautiful, and Tree Fresno. We'll be planting trees between 8:00 AM and 4:00 PM. There are two sort of main workshop times between 7:30 AM and 11:30 AM. And we're doing this on the McKenzie Trail in southeast Fresno. So we're trying to beautify a certain portion of the district and hoping to get lots of volunteers. I mean, my team will be out there bright and early at 7:30 AM. That's going to be Saturday.
Councilmember Soria.
Thank you, Council President. Just a couple announcements. One, yesterday, we had a great celebration during the groundbreaking of the Blackstone and McKinley Transit-oriented corridor housing development. And I wanna thank the staff, the mayor, my colleagues that have supported this project. It's been in the making over five, around five years, so just excited to be able to do the groundbreaking. And then in about 12 months, we'll be able to do the ribbon-cutting to welcome 88 new families to that neighborhood and see all the infrastructure upgrades that are gonna be out in that, a quarter of a mile of that neighborhood. The other thing that I wanted to say thank you to our police department, we had a great Mardi Gras parade. There was a lot of good presence, and the officers did an amazing job in just traffic control. And so I wanted to personally thank them because I know that every year, it gets a little bit bigger and a little bit more people, and there was no incidents. So it was a very successful event. I wanna thank you guys for the work that you do. The other thing, just wanna remind folks, election is around the corner. Make sure to go out and vote on Tuesday or by Tuesday. And then lastly, I did wanna ask our city manager, I know that there have been several announcements on Prop 68 funding that has been awarded to parks. Just wanted to get an update, was the city of Fresno awarded any? If not, can we get the information maybe on how we can improve the application so that we're more competitive for the future?
Yes. Based on the announcements, the city of Fresno did not receive any awards for the first round of Prop 68 that we applied for. And yes, our typical practice is to go back and look at how we can be more competitive in those grants.
Do we know, or any highlights of why we weren't as competitive?
Not at this point.
Okay. If, is there any way, if you guys could put a memo to the council members just to get an update on, you know, what those things?
We can certainly put a memo out when we have more information.
Perfect. Just because I know that we did some extensive work with the staff out, like in Quigley, and I know that it was one of our top priorities, so I just wanted to get some feedback on that. Thank you.
Councilmember Brettafield, you have the floor.
Yeah, I also just wanted to express my support for Support Blue Run. I've been a sponsor this year, as I have been every year and will continue to be every year. You guys are often criticized very quickly, but when you go out to Support Blue Run, you see the thousands of people that absolutely love our police, admire you, respect you, appreciate what you do. I do. I think the majority of our citizens do. And that's a wonderful event to come out and let police know that we greatly appreciate them because we do. And so I look forward to the event. I will be there as I always am, and I know it will be a wonderful day for everybody. So thank you to all our police department, law enforcement officers, men and women who put that uniform on every day. We are grateful for your sacrifice and what you do, and for your family's sacrifice as well.
Thank you, Councilmember Brettafield. Councilmember Chavez.
I'll be brief. I just wanna thank Kaiser Permanente for their sponsorship. They are installing some water hydration systems at Mosqueda Community Center. We will be doing a press conference there tomorrow, and it's been, you know, there's been a lot of investment in that community center. We're slated to receive the first wheelchair-accessible swing set for South Fresno there, and we appreciate Kaiser Permanente's investment. And I also wanna thank John Alkayer from the Fresno Fairgrounds. We are getting ready to actually open up two additional soccer fields in southeast with that partnership. So we appreciate that investment in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll just close it up by thanking Scott and Public Works for quickly fixing the lights that were off on Fulton Street. It's become a very heavy pedestrian street, given with all the new entertainment on that boulevard. So thank you for your quick response on fixing those streets.
President Arias, I forgot to mention one thing. In the excitement of the moment, the trophy that was the key to District Four, Sunnyside Trophy, they've been great partners. I wanna, I acknowledge them. They put a lot of work and effort into that, as they do everything that they help us with. So Sunnyside Trophy, shout out. Love you guys.
Thank you, Sunnyside Trophy Shop. Shop local. With that, let's move on to the consent calendar. Would there, is there any council members wishing to push an item, pull an item from the consent calendar for discussion? Councilmember Caprero.
I punched up for that comment you made, the Sunnyside Trophy. Another shout out to Sunnyside. This is great.
They're gonna start paying you for all the shout outs. Councilmember Brettafield.
Yeah, I'd like to pull item 1V, and just to register a no vote on 1H.
1V as in Victor is pulled? And we have the registration of the no vote? Councilmembers Barza.
Yes, I need to potentially recuse myself, item 1T. Just recusing.
There's a recusal on the record for item 1T, which is the state allocation for the new campus in West Fresno under Fresno City College. That is noted.
Any other items wishing to be pulled from the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the balance.
Motion to approve the balance by Member Caprero, second by Member Chavez.
I'd like to also recuse myself on that.
Okay. So let the record show that Councilmembers Soria and Esparza are recusing themselves from item 1T as in Tom. We have a motion and a second to approve the remainder of the consent calendar. Any opposition? Seeing none, the consent calendar is pulled. Now we will take up the items pulled immediately, starting with item 1V as in Victor. Councilmember Brettafield.
Yes, this relates, again, to the security measures that are being imposed. And I guess I noticed a couple of changes that's being adopted. One is, we're still having the construction of the fence, which should be approximately $250,000. Is that correct, city manager?
Yes, roughly.
Okay. And do you know when that will be started, where, when that's happening?
We will be starting the design immediately after approval.
Okay. And that fence will only encompass charter officials?
Per the resolution, I believe that's the case.
Okay, yeah. And so I'm opposed to that because I think it sends a terrible message that we're gonna protect charter officials and those of us up here, but we're not gonna construct the fence for city employees or other city employees. I just think that's a terrible message to send. On 7B, related to the Q Street Center Glass Doorway, will employees be screened through that door?
Once screening equipment is acquired, that would be the methodology, yes.
So the screening equipment, meaning the metal detectors?
Yes.
Are they definitely going to be purchased, or is that something that is considered?
I would say that's what the resolution is asking us to do, yes.
Okay. But it says shall be made available as though, as opposed to it will be made available. I mean, so is it a definite that another metal detector is going to be purchased? Is that for certain?
Based on my interpretation, yes.
Okay. But we don't know, what, Scott?
Leased, actually.
Yeah, just to clarify, leasing and not purchasing it.
Okay. So there will be another one? At that point, people will be entering through that doorway?
I believe the intention is to allow employees to enter through that entrance, but be screened.
Okay. Now on 7D, it says, "All city officials, employees who have a permit to park in the city hall south lot, south lot adjacent to Lary Street shall also be permitted to enter through the pedestrian gate in the back." That's new, is that not?
That was recently added, yes. And that item alone, the administration is really uncomfortable with, and we would like an opportunity to meet with the council subcommittee before this item moves forward. So I would request that be tabled for now.
Okay. So you're uncomfortable with what about it? Because I think that's, I mean, what this is saying is that those who are fortunate enough to be parking next to the building will get a pass through that back door and through the fence. But if you park across the street, on Tillery, you're not so fortunate, and you have to come around the front of the building to get screened. Is that correct?
That is our understanding as well, and based upon how that structure is set up right now, we are uncomfortable with making a determination that certain employees should get a pass through security and others not. So we would like an opportunity to talk to the council subcommittee and figure out something that works for everybody.
So what is it you're wanting, you're wanting this to?
To be, to be tabled to the next meeting.
Okay. So one question on 7E, and I share your concerns about that. It says that if the people coming through the front door, or our employees coming through the front door, if there is a delay due to the number of people, employees in line to enter, there would be a wait in excess of five minutes in the judgment of security personnel, those employees with proper identification shall be permitted to enter without security screening. So what this sounds like is if there's a delay, inevitably, there'll be a delay because there's hundreds of employees, if they feel it's, and I guess somebody makes a subjective judgment, they will not be going through the metal detectors.
That is the way the resolution is written at this point in time, yes.
So again, this raises the issues that I expressed early on, that we have some people who will be going through the metal detectors, not all employees will be going through the metal detectors. If there's a delay, which inevitably there will be, they'll just be waved through. We just witnessed in the country, somebody who got fired from a job came and killed people at the worksite. One of the concerns that people have had is that not everybody's being screened. And so we're giving the impression that this is a secure building when it's not, and that's why I've called it a gun-free zone. And that's exactly what's happening as we're working through this. More and more people are not being screened. More and more, certain employees are getting the opportunity to come through the back door just because they're parking next to the building, but those across the street from Tillery, they're not so lucky. I just think this is moving in the wrong direction. We're truly not securing the building. We're making it less secure as this is moving forward, and we've disarmed law-abiding citizens. So this is not something that I'm gonna support. This is moving in the wrong direction. I don't know if the council wants to pull this or not. I'm not gonna support this as it is today. So whatever the council wants to do, I won't be supporting this.
Thank you, Councilmember Brettafield. I have Councilmember Carbossi. If anybody wishes to speak to an item, please sign a card instead of being called up by the council members. It's just, put this on the record. Councilmember Carbossi, you have the floor.
I apologize, I did indicate that I was gonna call up an individual.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure, we still gotta get their information for the record.
Got it. So there are some things, questions I have for staff that I don't think can be discussed in an open meeting. I would have liked an opportunity, maybe now or in the future, to discuss this in closed session with the council and certain staff members. But here's my concern. It's the Milwaukee shooting, where five people were killed, someone was fired earlier in the day. We have great city employees. I think this is a great workplace, but things happen. I think we're pretty secure right now if there's a threat from the public, but you know, most of these shootings that happen are workplace shootings, and we wanna make sure all our employees are safe. Things happen, you can't predict it, but we can try and plan to be safer. And I just have some questions about whether we're gonna be totally safe or not totally safe. We either have safety or we don't. So I do share some of my colleagues' concerns, and I have more concerns of my own. Now I'm gonna ask Sam Frank with FCEA to come up here and speak, and then just state your name and address and all that.
And I'm here to speak today on this very issue and the impact it's gonna have on employees. I know that this is still in flux, but we've been set on a start date of March 16th, which is less than three weeks away. One of the things I wanna say is that I'm glad that some consideration for employees has been written into this document. And it is important that we distinguish employees from the general public as far as level of threat and also as far as the fact that they have to come here every single day. And I want everybody to understand that I appreciate the sensitivity to this, especially because so many of our, so much of our workforce is older and fixing to retire in the next few years, and we've got so many young employees coming onboard. And these employees, you know, being younger and being at the start of their, you know, careers, many of them have kids who need to be dropped off at school. Many of them have, you know, other considerations in their family life, and many are single parents, and it's very hard for them. So I appreciate this type of consideration for employees because when you're on probation, it's very easy to get cut because you're late. And if this does make people late, we could, we could see very good people going out the door simply because they have kids. And I don't want that impact to be borne by the employees. Also, I appreciate the consideration because employees like to take breaks, and many employees like to stay fit and healthy, and they like to go for a walk on their breaks, and they like to walk around the block. When you've got 15 minutes to do that, you want to be able to exit, you know, and get a good 10-minute walk. And if you have to come back in through a line after your 10-minute walk, and it's an unforeseen line, and now you're laid off your break, it's just as late as if you showed up late to work in the morning. And it's another ding. And the administration is looking at this as a serious issue with employees, more so than ever before. We just had a person let go who was on probation seven days before they were gonna make probation for being late. So this is an issue. It's important. As far as allowing employees to get in with just a check of their bags, there's nothing wrong with that. That's how you get into Save-A-Mar Center. If it ends up being just a wanding and a check of the bags, a quick wanding because they went on a walk, they left their keys and everything, and just took their badge with them, and then they come back in, they don't even have their bag with them, they can just get wanded and come right in. Backdoor is key. It's not funded. It's contingent upon funding in this document. It needs to be funded. It absolutely needs to be funded. Anybody? How many questions?
Sam, I just wanted to, for the comments that you made about allowing employees, and so the provision that we, that we included was to add flexibility for those reasons. We're not reinventing the wheel, guys. Like, this happens across the board in public buildings, which is why we felt that it was necessary to add language. So when we have, for example, I think the first council meeting, we had 100 football players in here. They, it actually went pretty quickly, but if you do get a situation where there's a long line, we do wanna give preference to employees to come in. It happens in the state capitol. It happens in the nation's capitol, where if employees have their badge and that we know that they work in the building, they get preference in going in front of the line. Doesn't mean that they're not gonna get screened. We just have to make sure that our security guards are trained enough to understand that that's the policy, and that they have to exercise that flexibility and give them priority over the public to come in so that they can come back and do their job. That's what we wanna do. We wanna prevent those issues, and that's why we included that type of language. Thank you for your comments, Sam.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, with that, I'll make a motion to approve, second by Member Chavez. Any other members of the public wish to speak to this item? Seeing none, just wanna finish off with thanking the administration. The recommendation to secure this building completely was the administration's recommendation with the police department's support. This, of course, is new to us as a city. We're making adjustments to ensure the safety of everyone and the efficiency of the security measures. It's not gonna be perfect today. We will go ahead and schedule a closed session and discuss any additional adjustments we have to make along the way. I would point out that the resolution does give the police department and the administration some flexibility in being able to make minor adjustments. But to suggest that this is a gun-free zone and it's not secure at all, it's not the case. Our goal is to be as secure as possible while still maintaining a public Our goal is to be as secure as possible while still maintaining a public facility that deals with thousands of people on a daily basis coming in and houses thousands of employees. So it is a balance. I think it's the right balance, and it's time to move forward with it. Is there any opposition to Item 1B as in Victor? Okay. Item passes 5-2 with Member Carbasi and Member Bretterfield voting no. Thank you all for the time. Thank you, Sam. Now let's move on to the...sorry about that. The 10:05 public hearing. The hearing is to adopt the 553rd Amendment to the Master Fee Schedule Resolution 8420.
Council President, I don't think we can go to that item until it's actually timed.
Oh, we have a 10-minute lag till we can continue with any items.
Okay. That's the vice president's role, right?
That is. Thank you. Well, council, I guess we're going to go on a break because we don't have any additional items. We will go on a five-minute break and come back at 10:05 for the next item. Thank you all.
I'm going to glue myself here. One of us.
We're coming back into session at 10:06 to hear the 10:05 item, hearing to consider adoption of the 553rd Amendment to the Master Fee Schedule Resolution 8420 to increase the Copper River impact fees for interior collector roadways and decrease copper river impact fees for major roadway infrastructure and sewer backbone facilities. Staff, you have the floor.
Good morning. I'm Andrew Benelli with the Public Works Department. I'm here with the public hearing to update the Copper River impact fees. This is, I believe, the third update of these fees. They've been in place since Copper River master plan development was first conceived and started. The Copper River fees are fees that are just paid by homes and development within the Copper River master plan community. These fees were put in place to help fund the infrastructure, the additional infrastructure that's part of Copper River. These fees do not affect the rest of the community, only the area within the Copper River. And I know the council's aware, but for the public, the Copper River master plan community is north of Copper Avenue and east of Fryant and south of Salaxa, which is...and it is on the north end of the community. These fees, they have hired a consultant, Quadnoff Engineering or QK, to prepare an update of their NEXUS study. They were the original firm that created the first study, and they've determined that some of the fees were too high. The subdivision is...or the development is now about half-done. They have completed all of the development on the east side of Copper River. They're now building the infrastructure for the west side of Copper River. And from the work that's been done and the costs of the work that's been done, they've determined that some of the fees were higher than they needed to be. So their recommendation from their consultant is that we lower the major roadway infrastructure fee from 7,972 to 4,836. They are recommending that we increase the interior collector roadway fee, this is per gross acre, from 26,676 to 31,155. And they are recommending that we decrease the sewer impact fee, this is the large sewer collection system, from 877 per dwelling unit to 479. Now, I would be happy to answer any questions. We also have representatives from the developer of the master plan community here. They can also ask any questions you might have.
Thank you, staff. Before I go to the council, can you explain to me in layman's terms why it is that a developer, an outside consultant, or a consultant to a developer is the one recommending adjustment of fees versus our staff doing it?
The reason, even when we do update on our fees, we hire a consultant, someone who's an expert in this. There's quite a bit of work that was done to analyze the money that's been spent so far, the fees that have been collected so far, and so it's a...we just didn't have the staff capacity to do the work.
Can you also explain to me, the fees that are being collected are for improvements exactly where in those project areas? What is actually...what are those impact fees meant to fix or to build?
These fees are being used to build the roadways inside of Copper River. There's some of the larger roadways like A La Cante Winery. They also help fund some of the work that's done on Copper River Road. If you've been out there lately, that...the west end of Copper River is being reconstructed now from a two-lane roadway to a four-lane roadway. It will also help pay for the work on Willow. Willow is a two-lane roadway north of Copper River that's going to be widened to a four-way roadway. There's also some roads interior to it. They have two fees. One is the major roads, one is the collector roads. And the collector roads are A La Cante Winery, there's several others. So this reimburses the master developer. The master developers aren't necessarily building all the homes. They are built...they are selling some 20-acre parcels to other developers, and so even though they've spent this money upfront to build these major roadways, there...this allows them to recapture some of that investment from other developers that buy parcels, and they seem to still have, even though the fees are higher, they still have interest from other developers because they're paying the higher fee, but they're not having to make the investment in the major roadways and the sewers. So it's really a revolving fund that the city manages to repay the master developers.
So if the new assessed fees are lower than what the actual costs will be, if whatever formula the consultant came up with is inaccurate, who pays the difference at that point?
There's no liability to the city. The master developers, if they invest more than is projected by these fees, that investment is solely theirs. There's no risk to the city of having to contribute additional funds.
So you wouldn't be asking us five years downstream to have Public Utilities put in an additional sewer line because somehow it wasn't estimated, or asking us to put Measure C funds in these roadways that we reduce the fee for?
We would not. In fact, they are, as we speak, putting in some of the major sewer lines in that area, which the west...east half of the project is substantial because there's a lot of grading. A lot of the sewers are very deep. So they're working on all that now, building this infrastructure. But these fees are updated every five years, so we will be back in five years with an update. I don't know yet if that'll be an increase or a decrease, but as they move forward, they're getting a better idea of what the true costs are and looking at how much revenue is being received from these fees. So there's always a true-up.
Member Carbasi.
Mr. Benelli, this isn't the first time the council's been asked to vote on a matter such as this, whether it's this development or another development, correct?
You know, the Copper River is the only development that has its own particular fees, but we don't have a lot of master plan communities in this city. We are getting more of them, but to my knowledge, the Copper River is the only master plan community that pays additional fees.
Right.
All the others look for reduction. That's not the case here. They pay additional fees.
I can say, you know, it's really a shame we don't have more master plan communities throughout this city, whether it's southwest or northwest, because they offer different types of housing for all different types of folks.
They do.
But that's just my opinion. So, quick question. So QK, let's say they do an analysis. I'm willing to bet, correct me if I'm wrong, they have a reputation, and they're somewhat independent, they're not going to stake the reputation on bad numbers. They're pretty careful with their process, correct?
Very careful, and really, the information they had was much better than the first two...the first two fee adjustments because they've actually built a lot of the infrastructure now. So they're really working right now to finish the infrastructure. I mean, it'll be...it's a big project. It'll be a few years before it's completed, but a lot of the infrastructure is under construction now.
Okay. And then for the public lastly. So let's say you have a piece of land, and you want to develop a master plan community. You're the lead developer. A lot...so not to burden our taxpayers, a lot of the main key infrastructures to start the project, that's actually paid for by the lead developer, and these fees are used later on. So if someone else comes in, I don't want to name names, ABC builders or whatever, making up names, they will reimburse the developer for the initial expense. So this is a way, kind of a revenue neutral way, we can get more housing in the community.
That's correct. I mean, these are the master developers that would like to see this fee. Like I said, they're selling what's considered a super lot, which is usually a 20-acre parcel. They'll sell it to another home builder who just built the local streets, and they'll pay this fee, and the master developer is able to recapture their investment that way. If any of you have been out there recently, there's a lot of construction going on. They're really uprunning a lot of the costs of that development right now.
So what a great way, then, to increase housing when we have a housing crisis, to get people to take the risk and invest, and then have this process that really is more revenue neutral for the taxpayers. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Councilmember Soria, and then Bretterfield.
Thank you. Just have a couple of questions. One, just kind of wanted to reassure, because I know folks get concerned about new growth and new growth paying for itself, and the fact that, yes, when we do grow, it does extend our services. We constantly talk about police, fire, and how we don't have...we're not even minimum...we're not even meeting minimum staffing levels with our fire and so forth. So I just want to make sure that what we are voting on today is not going to have an impact on those things, and that this growth that has been happening is actually paying for itself. I do believe that, you know, we do need to build more housing, given the housing crisis, both not just affordable housing, but market rate. But I also am very sensitive to the fact that because we've grown to be 121 square miles, we continually get harped on by, you know, the city staff that we have so much deferred maintenance, and then the inner city, the neighborhoods that many of us in the southern portion of the city represent, get impacted because we don't get the types of investments because we're so spread out. So can you speak to what that impact could be, or maybe it's not, so that the public knows in full transparency what this does?
The Copper River development, like most of the rest of the city, pays impact fees for police, fire, parks, streets, and traffic signals. They have no reduction in any of those fees in this area. They pay the full price. In addition to that, they also have a community facilities district that maintains all of their landscaping, also pays for the street lighting, and a lot of the other work. None of the impact fees in the entire city pay salaries. They strictly build new infrastructure. So like the police impact fee builds a new substation, we're building a new substation today at Fancher Creek area. The fire fees pay for new fire station. As you know, we're building Fire Station 18. We're getting ready to have the groundbreaking soon. So this project is also unique in that it has its own sewer treatment plant. There is a surface water treatment plant. It's not right in Copper River, but it serves Copper River. So it's a little unique in that it has a lot of its own infrastructure as compared to the rest of the community.
So what you're saying is that the growth is paying for itself?
This growth is paying for itself. The community facilities district pays for all of the maintenance in that area.
Does that include the neighborhood streets as well?
Yes, it does.
Perfect. Okay, awesome. So I just wanted to make sure so that the public knows. And then the other thing that I wanted to ask or request, can we get a status report a quarter in to the change...after the adoption of this, so that we can see how it's working out in terms of the reduction in fees, if that's okay with the staff?
Certainly.
Yeah, perfect. Thank you.
Councilmember Bretterfield, you have the floor.
Just a quick question for Scott. Scott? So you've reviewed the report from this QK, and you feel that it's an accurate report. Enough fees are being collected for the infrastructure that will go on.
Absolutely. I wanted to add to Mr. Benelli's comments. I believe we did provide three rounds of comments on QK's fee study, and we handled that just as if the city had hired the consultant ourselves, and we were satisfied with the product.
Okay. Well, I'm satisfied with it as well, and I appreciate the concern that other council members have for my district. I'm feeling the love, and I want to make a motion to approve.
Well, second, and a reminder, our families live up there, too, so you have a good district. With that, do we have any public comment on this matter?
We punched it.
Oh, Councilmember Carbasi, and then Councilmember Caprillo.
One moment. I have one follow-up...sorry, Jeff. One follow-up question for Scott or Mr. Benelli, whoever wants to. My colleague made some really good points. I just want to clarify one thing. This master plan community has a community facilities district, a CFD. So 20 years from now, when it's all built out, that CFD, which is funded by the residents in the area, are going to pay for street repairs, street maintenance, and landscape maintenance, correct?
That is correct, and that fee has an escalator that keeps up with the cost of living.
So, but there are a lot of communities, some in my district, don't have CFDs, and they continue to drain on the general fund. So this new development is paying for itself.
That is correct. We have many subdivisions that either have older CFDs that don't have an escalator.
Right.
They may have a landscape and lighting district that doesn't have an escalator. Some have no assessment whatsoever. Core part of the city, most of those have no assessment. And we use, not all general fund, but yes, we use quite a bit of other money that's not paid by those property owners. Copper River is in a community facilities district. They pay that...they pay an additional tax that goes up every year if necessary. So they pay for the cost of all the landscape, and they have extensive landscaping, if you've been in there, and a lot of the other costs that go along with maintaining that.
So last clarifying question. If we had other neighborhoods, some in districts who are other parts, that decided to elect to form a CFD, then they would expect normal maintenance without a drain on the general fund? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Andy, if I may. Andrew, Mr. Benelli. So this is really an interesting topic. So is this the trend now going forward as opposed to what we've failed to do in the past? A trend of having this self-contained, self-sustaining development?
All new developments enter into either a CFD or homeowners association to maintain the infrastructure that includes the street lighting, the landscaping, and the pavement maintenance. There's no additional taxation for police or fire, but that comes out of the general fund.
Is there any way to include those two expenses? I wonder.
Possibly. You really have to justify how they're getting additional service over the rest of the community to add police and fire.
Thank you very much. I hope we keep this trend going. Seems to be the answer. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Vice President Caprillo. I do have one question for you. I know we've talked about developments paying for themselves and being self-sustaining, but clarify for me, the community facilities districts only fund the interior of those developments. They don't pay for the maintenance of all the roads that lead to the new development, correct? They're not paying for future repairs of Willow, future repairs of all the major arteries, which require us to redirect general fund money, Measure C or SB 1 dollars. Because I think, from my perspective, the concern is the amount of square miles that we have to maintain after new developments occur. It's not the interior, but everything leading to that development.
You are correct. The CFDs just pay for the interior roads. The impact fees pay for widening those roads or improving those roads to get to the subdivision, but it's not maintenance money.
Correct.
It's, you know, to widen the road or to add a new traffic signal. Those things are funded out of the impact fees, but it's not maintenance money.
Great, thank you. A public comment? Councilmember Carbasi?
Real quick, I'm sorry, one more time. Mr. Benelli, because he actually made a...the president made a very good point. I just want to clarify, and he's correct, and I'm glad he brought that up. Now, the master plan communities, this model, they can potentially offer different levels of housing, whether it's affordable or starter homes to apartments or whatever they have. But in perpetuity, they actually pay for their own internal maintenance, doesn't drain the general fund, and they...the property tax generated, or the property and sales tax generated from these communities actually aid...they add to the general fund, which can be used to maintain all the main roads, not just in their areas, but the entire city. Is that correct?
If the council chooses to spend general fund money to maintain streets, yes, it's eligible. But you are correct. The sales tax does go up as this Copper River does...we're seeing some commercial come in now to Copper River. It generally follows once you have the rooftops, then you see the commercial development. It generally follows, once you have the, the rooftops, then you see the commercial development. So we're starting to see quite a bit of commercial development in that area. There's also some multifamily projects proposed that are going forward. So all of those will be in the CFD.
Right.
And as you state, they, they will spend sales tax money that will help with police and fire and other uses.
So potentially, you know, commercial follows residential, takes some time. So that revenue goes back to the general fund, which helps the entire city, not just that area.
You are correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Unless, of course, they buy from Amazon and we refund them other sales tax for 30 years, then there's no net profit for the city. Anyway, with that, Jeff Roberts, come on up. You have three minutes and nothing more.
Thank you. Mr. President, members of the council, my name is Jeff Roberts. I work for the Ascini Group, 1396 West Herndon, City of Fresno, Suite Number 110. I want to state very quickly for the record that we do concur with the staff recommendation with the fees that have been recommended by QK in their report. And this is the, the third report that they have done over the past 20-year period, the life of Copper River. I wanted to add a couple of things that might put this into perspective. And when we were processing Copper River, actually started working on it before 2000, but when we came to the city and asked the city to consider the project that involved a sphere change, a sphere of influence change, and eventual annexation, the council at that time and the staff at that time were very insistent that there was to be no impact on the rest of the city in terms of cost. And so we did have to create not only a separate sewer plant, a separate system of, of fees, and a separate CFD. Today, that CFD 12 that's been in place for many years is working very well, has a surplus of funds, adequately maintains the community at the, in a way that can't be done citywide. CFD 15, which has been approved by this council, is just about ready to kick into place to take care of the east side of the project. So a couple of things I want to mention that why we had a separate set of fees, and Scott Mosier is going to remember this real well, we proposed roundabouts in public streets. And at the time, back in the early 2000s, this was unheard of. And we now today have several roundabouts there that are being maintained by the, by the project and they're working very well. But this is an example of why there was a separate set of conditions, a separate set of fees. We had to do, do the first water supply assessment in the city and those sort of things. So I'm happy to answer any questions and we're happy to be here and appreciate your support.
Thank you. With that, I think we're done with public comment. Is there a motion to approve, Councilor Bretterfield? Motion by my Bretterfield, second by myself. Do we have any opposition to the 1005 item? Seeing none, it's approved unanimously. Thank you, staff and Mr. Roberts. The next item on the agenda is a 1010. Actions pertaining to the residential permit parking District 10. Councilmember Esparza and the Plan Development Department, you have the floor.
All right. Thank you, Council President. So what we have here, this item, are some revisions to Parking District Number 10. Just for some context, Parking District Number 10 was formed in 2018 in response to the heavy impact on the neighborhoods of employees at the Veterans Hospital parking within those neighborhoods. And so the Parking District was, was, you know, by the initiative of the, the residents there. And so as you can see here, based on the timeline, I, I've inherited this issue. Although the Parking District has been formed for 15 months, the parking issues there that have existed for, for decades now and only, you know, recently was something done, again, through, through the action of the actual residents there. And in these 15, in my 13 months here on council, we've, we've kind of had a test run with the current district and the current rules. And it's one of the top calls I get in my office to my staff and myself. A lot of different opinions, a lot of folks very passionate about the issue. It's a big quality of life issue, these neighborhoods for all the residents, many of who I see sitting in the front here, welcome to City Hall this morning. So myself and the Parking Director, Thomas, we went out to the neighborhood and did a couple of town halls to hear from everybody. We made sure, we, we spent the money to make sure everybody got an invitation. We sent a, a mailer to every single housing unit within the district, all 738. And so again, we had a lot of kind of mixed messages there, different kind of competing priorities for the Parking District, depending on how close you live to the VA and how impacted your neighborhood was. And so we've come up with a couple of revisions here to try and balance those different preferences of folks in the neighborhood. I don't think it's perfect. I don't think the previous, previous one was perfect, hence the calls from residents. But as I mentioned to them directly, you know, I want to give these proposed revisions a shot and then continue to adjust accordingly. And if we have to come back and change these again, we certainly will. And having Thomas kind of in front of the residents, hoping that you took, you got a, a big takeaway in terms of hearing from them, you know, the things even beyond here, the revisions and just the, what, what they expect from your, from your division. So with that said, we do have a map and we are shrinking the size of the Parking District. So areas that are a bit further away from the hospital, where the primary impact is at, will now be excluded. There's an area south of Clinton that has not been enforced, those residents never wanted it in the first place, and that's going to be formally excluded. And then we are adjusting the hours from, I believe, was it eight to five, Thomas?
Seven to seven.
It was, sorry, it was seven to seven. And now we're going nine to six, nine AM to six PM. So those are the two primary adjustments we are proposing here. And so, Thomas, I'm not sure if you had anything to say or we can open up the public comments?
Let's go to public comment. I have four people signed up. If you just want to come to the podium and state your name. Helen, Ben, and Peterson.
Good morning.
Go ahead. Can you pull down the mic for us? Thank you.
Is that better? Good morning. First of all, I wanted to thank Nelson Esparza and Mr. Thomas Gaffrey for their tireless work in trying to get this Parking District to work for all of our neighbors, especially because they inherited this mess. In regard to the streets to be taken off the parking grid, we do not agree with Thesta to Princeton. It should stay as it is, or at least to Brown Street. Also Orchard to Princeton should not be changed. Those of us who live in the Veterans Hospital District are, are close to the hospital or the most affected by the parking problem. We formed the largest Parking District in Fresno, and yet we have never had daily enforcement like Fresno City College, which is only a mile away from us. All of us pay for the right to park in front of our own homes, and yet we still can't. Some hospital employees have some of our parking placards. I don't know how they got them, but they have them. And some are using blue disabled placards. And we have patients that tell us that the parking lots are full. We also have employees telling us that they are not full. So we went on a shopping expedition, Suzette and I, and we found that this is very true. One of, of the lots is full daily, the other one is mostly full daily with just a few spots, depending on the time. But there are two lots that are never full daily. One has quite a few spaces every day, for at least over a year, from what I understand. And the other one has gobs and gobs and gobs of open parking, and it's not been used for well over a year. That's from the employees that monitor it. I know that you can do nothing about the veterans that park in our area, but you could give tickets to those that choose to. We would like Mr. Esparza and Mr. Garza and E, I'm sorry, Mr. Gaffrey, and even involved Senator or Congressman Costa to write to the Veterans Affairs Administration in Mirror Island like we have and let them know about this problem and get the director to do his job. He is the employer. He is the director. He needs to be the leader and tell them to not park in our areas. We have called over and over about the parking problem, and I'm not going to go into it as much because I don't want you to get bored and, but my other colleagues will. I complained one day and called Mr. Gaffrey and told him that I alone counted over 27 cars in less than a three-block radius. He went out himself and, and gave tickets, I believe it was either 26 or 27, and then it's a day or two. One police cadet was trained by the city parking employees to give tickets and in one day, I don't even know it was the full day, but he had already given over 50 tickets. That gives you an idea how impacted we are. And this new grid does not even address the problem of Fresno Street and Clinton. Before our district, we couldn't get out of Fresno Street. Now we can't use Clinton either. It is too dangerous. It is bumper to bumper and some of them are even in the roadway into the street. I guess that's all.
Thank you.
I just wanted you to have an idea of what we are having to live with.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
The next speaker? Come on up.
Hi, my name is Ben Anderson. I live at 2444 East Brown. I'm right across the street from the VA Hospital, basically, one of the most impacted residents there. First, I'd like to thank you all for understanding the issue and working to put the district in place, but I'd like you to know that your efforts were undermined by the Parking Department, who is not enforcing it. So for decades, our, our residents have been dealing with this issue. They would move our trash cans. You all heard about it last time and you understood where we stood and you put this in place. I don't think that what your goal was, was to just put signs up. I think your idea was to have it enforced and it's not being enforced. I've got emails from Thomas saying that they have multiple, people going out multiple times a day. It's simply not true. I have literally hundreds of photos of people who have parked in front of just my house. I don't worry about anybody else's house. Other residents are worrying about their houses, but I literally have hundreds of photos of cars parked in front of my house that have never gotten a ticket. So hundreds of them. So, and I, literally, I live on the, on a, on a corner lot, so I have kind of a lot of space in front of me. But I call, used to call constantly. I don't call very much anymore because I'm sick of being harassed and I'm sick of being asked to work for it. So if I call in the morning when I'm on my way to work, I don't have time to stand out there and gather a make, model, color, license plate, VIN, you know, what that person ate for dinner last night. Like they're just asking way too much information. If I give them an address and I tell them that there are several cars parked there illegally, that should be enough. And sometimes Thomas understands and sometimes the people on the phone don't understand that. They, they have actually, in fact, recently told me that the management was working on policy that would make it a requirement that we give make, model, color, and license plate. And that's simply not possible. I have a job. I don't get paid to do this. This is not my job. So this is the big thing. So in, you know, when it comes to changing the size of this district or altering it in any way, many of us are not for that unless it has to do with it extending all the way to Shields. It does go quite a ways out. But those north-south running roads, it does not make sense to cede that back to the federal government until we actually understand the full impact of this Parking District by enforcing it. If we're not enforcing it, we don't know what we're getting out of this district. And currently, many of us are getting absolutely nothing. And in fact, it, it goes back the other way. They're enforcing it towards our residents much more harshly. The day that our permits expired, everybody on my block got a ticket. Yet when I call and come back from calling in the morning, I see four or five cars in front of my car, house that I called on, still don't have a ticket. So I urge you not to allow this to be shrunk and, and that you force the enforcement, the people in the call center especially, very rude to us.
Thank you.
And make that, make that work for us because that's, I think, what was your goal with this.
Thank you. Fair point. Next speaker?
I'm Suzette Peterson. Thank you.
Can you pull down the mic? We want to be able to hear you. There you go.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. They've pretty much covered everything with the exception of the speed of the shuttle buses. And they've changed the route. They were going up Mariposa to Princeton where they have the stops. And now they're flipping down Brown because they can kind of gear them, almost, they don't have to wait for stoplights. So that's a problem and of course it's tearing up the roads. But most importantly is the fact that the parking is, when we got our placards, when this first passed, it was real important for the people selling us these placards, the city officials. You are not to pass these pack, these placards out. They are for your visitors, your family, or you will be in trouble. You'll be fined. And I have to tell you, my family has increased immensely over the last two years with all the people in front of my house and across the street and on the block. There's no way they live in this area. There's no way. Actually, one of them told me their dad lives down the road and he gave them a placard. Now, maybe the rules have changed, but it just doesn't seem right. I've lived in this block for 45 years and the patients always park there. We're very respectful. They're patients. They should be able to park there. But the employees are rude and they drop their trash in the street. They talk, they giggle, they smoke cigarettes. Sometimes they make out on the corner. It just isn't the way I want to live. So I would appreciate if we keep our signs, add some more, do whatever we can to, to get them off our street. I know that sounds rude, but they have parking lots. When we were there yesterday, they have plenty of places to park and it doesn't really need to. I'm in Brown and Mariposa, big, big, big area for the veterans' employees to park. That's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Any other speakers on this item? Come on up.
Good morning, Mr. Esparza and Mr. Gaffrey. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak at the Town Hall meeting last month. I appreciate that you have listened to residents that this is an issue. I am new to this issue and I probably differ from my neighbors a little bit in that we are not near the hospital and yet Parking Services comes down the street a few times a day and tickets, tickets residents. It is my experience that the city is overreaching with this district and it shows a lack of transparency by the City of Fresno to not mail out the, the meeting date and time for this city council meeting, like the Town Hall meeting was mailed out to everyone and said a few signs were posted on phone poles a couple of weeks in advance in a neighborhood of 1,000 people. And Mr. Esparza at the meeting in January told me that this would be mailed out to everybody in the neighborhood before it was voted on. The, the shifts at the VA are about eight to four. So in reality, just hitting people at the beginning and a little bit after lunch would solve the problem, but keeping it until four or six only penalizes the citizens of the neighborhood. Between four and six is oftentimes when Parking Services shows up and people that live in the neighborhood are ticketed. I have a handicapped neighbor who's been ticketed two to three times and she has a placard in her window. We've got work trucks in the neighborhood and this is farther away from, from the VA. People that live in the neighborhood that have, that have work trucks that are ticketed, which is, it's unacceptable for one neighborhood to be targeted to have Parking Services every single day. I don't have the experience where there's insufficient ticketing. In fact, it's, it's over-ticketing of, of citizens. And when I, when I called in to Parking Services, the response that I got from Mayor Rebecca and Carl was that I was a problem. And Carl told me that I needed to come in in person with a photo ID in order to get a permit, which I hadn't gotten after three months of requesting and mailing in a request. He said, "Well, you have to take off work to go to the DMV. You can take off work to come down to the City of Fresno." And I said, "You know what? That's not even true. Do we really want to become the DMV, the most hated government agency in California? You can use the mail. You can go on Saturdays. You can go online. You can change your address very quickly. And it's not a law to put your address on your vehicle. I have a corporate vehicle. There's no need to put my home address on my vehicle." And yet there are people in the neighborhood, residents of the neighborhood, who are being told that they have to give in their signed lease. told that they have to, um, give in their signed lease, um, which should be a private matter between them and their landlords or whoever the, if, if there are renters in the neighborhood, for example, um, th- they shouldn't have to give over private information in order to park in front of their own homes. Um, the, the Parking Services, um, people that, that answer the phone, Mayor Rebecca and Carl are rude and condescending to people that, that call in saying that there are problems, saying that there is no problem, saying you're the only one that's complaining. I've gotten that a couple times. Um, and when I called into Mr. Asparza's office, I found something very different, and clearly Mr. Asparza has said, has said the same thing. Um, there are many people that care about this issue. Um, so, I'm, I'm strongly against this, um, I don't know how to say this in a, in a professional way, but it's, it's just a drop in the bucket, um, this, this nine-to-six thing, and, "Oh, well, you know, we'll revisit it in six to twelve months, so we're going to pay the money to, to make new signs all over again." The permits should be free if every single day the, the city is getting fifty to three hundred dollars a ticket off of residents, off of VA employees, off of VA guests. Um, the city Parking Services has forty thousand dollar vehicles. They're not hurting for, for money, and twenty dollars three times, and telling people that they can't have guests over or they have to register for an event to have people over for dinner is inappropriate. Um...
Thank you. There's no further public comments. We're being disbacked to a dais. Councilmember Asparza, you have the floor.
Thank you. Uh, so, today, uh, you know, it was sort of, uh, all these public comments were, uh, some reflection of, uh, the nature of the calls, uh, received. Today was kind of a, a three-to-one ratio, but it typically is about a fifty-fifty ratio depending, uh, on the day in terms of the calls and, uh, you know, the preferences expressed by the, the different preferences expressed by the neighbors. Uh, I, ideally, uh, if we had it our way, we did not want to do this permanently on a legislative basis. Uh, Thomas and I actually discussed, uh, trying to do it on a trial basis, but, uh, by virtue of the, the law, we were held to, to make these changes and actually, uh, change the signs and, and try out these new boundaries. Uh, we were forced to, uh, per the law, per our city attorney's opinion, uh, to actually pass this on the dais. Uh, so, we, our, our original plan, uh, to kind of do it on a temporary, kind of informal, uh, basis and, and, and test it out, uh, did not, was not going to work, and that's why we're here today. Um, and I'm, I'm not, again, not making a commitment this is going to be, uh, permanent. It, it's a work, uh, a work in progress. Um, uh, Thomas, can we, I mean, take, well, actually, City Attorney, I wanted to ask you, uh, if, if, even if we wanted to make changes today to the, the map, is that permissible given the public hearing nature requirements that we, uh, that we met before we came here today?
Yes, I would think you could, especially if they're not, uh, major changes.
Well, I mean, the changes would be to adjust boundaries, just be, but I, I do want to get the opinion of, uh, or I wanted to hear from the Parking Director again, because we had discussed this, and, um, it sounded like, uh, some of the, uh, folks in the public comment wanted to, uh, potentially adjust the orange on, uh, the north and south streets, Orchard and Thesta. Um, for, in, in your professional opinion, you know, moving, bringing the, that exemption down, uh, all the way to Clinton, uh, what, you know, we had discussed this, but just for, for the record, if you, if you would...
Brianna, can you put that up on the screen for people to see? The attachment.
It's the, this map with the green and orange.
Yeah. It's an exhibit in Granicus. Oh, sorry. Um, but I could talk through it briefly if you'd like. So, the unique thing about the north-south streets, and you can see that from the parcel lines on the map, is those properties are corner lots. So, those properties that are on the north-south streets still would receive a residential parking permit and have the protected parking on the permitted streets, which are the ones in green. And so, that's why we'd recommended that Thesta and Orchard be fully removed. In addition, there at Orchard and First, where you see that large parcel, that's Bernie Elementary School. Um, and then the feedback we received from the residents at the community meeting was that those closer to the VA on Harvard-Brown and Princeton were more impacted, which is why we chose to leave Mariposa and Angus, is still permit required south of Princeton.
Okay, great. Yeah, thank you, thank you for the reminder, just, yeah, for the, the record. Uh, Thomas, when, when we, well, I, I think you were not Parking Director when it was first formed, uh, but, uh, in terms of the staffing and enforcing the different parking districts, I mean, have you had any type of increase, uh, in the staffing to accommodate the enforcement of Parking District Ten?
I haven't had an increase in parking enforcement staffing since this was created, and during the past year, I've had a number of intermittent vacancies that we filled. Um, and we have done some retooling of our daytime enforcement so that we can spend some more time in the VA and in these areas closer to the hospital where we seem to see more severe impacts, because that was what we encountered at the community meeting, is we heard residents that were closer to the hospital wanted more enforcement, and residents farther from the hospital wanted less enforcement.
Sure. So, so, you're telling me, I mean, we, just again, for the record, we created the largest parking district in the city, and we did not, uh, budgetarily account, account for the enforcement of it?
Yeah, we didn't have, we planned to, I, that was before my time, so I don't know what the thought process was on that, but this residential parking district has more permits issued than all the other ones combined.
Sure, sure. Okay. Um, in your professional opinion, I mean, uh, with, I mean, to effectively, right, so we, we, we can, we've heard, we've heard different, differing opinions from the residents, but in your professional opinion, to, uh, to enforce these, you know, the, the number of parking spots and housing units and within the district, I mean, would take a half-time equivalent, a full-time equivalent? I mean, what, I mean, do you have any idea, uh, in terms of enforcement?
I, I wouldn't be able to give an, a guesstimate on that right now, because it varies based on time of day and day of week and so on.
Okay. Well, what I'm, what I'm working towards here is, uh, again, for the folks who felt the over-enforcement, I, I think we're loosening up some of the, the outer boundaries of the district and, uh, trying to make it a little more accommodating for those folks, uh, the north and south streets and all the way up to Simpson, where that's not going to be part of the district anymore. Uh, for the folks who feel like it's underenforced, uh, you know, I would be open to making budgetary adjustments, uh, here coming in June, um, and providing your department with the, your division with the resources it needs to actually, uh, appropriately enforce what is left. Uh, and I think, you know, even with these adjustments, if, you know, if they're not patrolling all of this yellow anymore, like you had mentioned, that might free up some space within their, uh, their constraints to more, more appropriately, uh, enforce the east-west, uh, roads.
Exactly.
Uh, and, you know, we, I think, uh, thank you, Thomas, you can, yeah. We are doing what we can as a, as a city. Uh, just last week, we passed, uh, a resolution, a budget resolution. We, uh, put forth our portion, uh, of money for a stoplight at Angus and Clinton, uh, to make, uh, to help facilitate one of the, the smaller parking lots, uh, for the VA employees. And so, again, I, ultimately, I, I lay the blame for, uh, this whole debacle, uh, at the, at the feet of, uh, the, you know, the federal government and, and the VA. Um, but, you know, on the city side, we are doing everything possible. We're putting money where we can. Um, that, you know, that one parking lot from, you know, crossing from, uh, crossing Clinton on Angus, uh, is not going to solve the problem, but, you know, we're, we're chipping in where we can. Uh, and again, on, on a budgetary basis, for those folks who feel you're underenforced, um, I'm, I'm open to, during the budget, which will begin the, the first week of June, um, and, was we open the pocketbook and decide how to spend money, uh, really dedicating, uh, the, the resources you actually need to, to feel like you are being served, uh, in the district, and, uh, all the efforts you made, you put forth in actually creating it are not, were not in vain. Um, and again, for the folks who, uh, feel, feel the opposite way, uh, I mean, there's a lot of yellow, a lot of yellow in this picture here in terms of loosening up of, of the district, um, much to the chagrin of, of folks of the opposing view. Uh, so, we're doing the best here we can to, uh, to balance these, uh, the preferences by the neighbors. And so, I know it's not perfect. Um, I know not everybody could be here this morning, uh, but I, I do want to make a motion, uh, with my colleagues to, uh, pass the, the map and the adjustments, uh, as it is, with the understanding, uh, that, uh, Thomas, if we could maybe revisit in six months or by the, by the budget time, and you keep your staff keeping track of the level of traffic and folks parking here on these north-south streets and how that's like going to impact the neighbors. Uh, and as you folks have seen, we do have the ability to, within about a month, month and a half, cobble together some changes and actually pass it, uh, here at council. So, um, I do want to try this out. I'm sorry we could not do it, uh, on a more informal basis, had to be formal. Um, and I'm still going to be here to take your calls, listen to you, come to the meetings, and, uh, consider that input as we consider any other changes.
Uh, the motion's been made. It's been sent to my member Chavez. I do have one question, Thomas. I noticed that you guys are removing Orchard, the frontage of Bernie Elementary, from enforcement or the parking district. Do you have any concerns? Is that correct?
Uh...
That's the orange street.
Kind of, sort of. It's being, that section in front of Bernie on Orchard is being removed from the parking district, but that section had no permit parking to begin with. The adjacency to the school side was loading zones, and on the other side was timed zone already.
Perfect. So, there's no risk that VA folks are going to go and park on that frontage street?
Correct, because it was already time-limited or loaded.
Perfect. Thank you. That's my only question.
I, 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 I think, I think in loosening up the district, I mean, we, we, we run this risk, which is why I wanted to do it temporarily, and we're going to revisit this issue, uh, pre-budget or right about, about budget time. Um, and considering the changes here, uh, the residents who live in the district were my, my number-one priority, uh, but I had also heard from, uh, non-residential folks, right, the businesses, the FUSD, the school, um, they, you know, and their concerns about teachers and other staff not having enough, uh, space to park. So, uh, you know, we did, I did, I took, I took that stuff into consideration and incorporated it where we could, but the, the residents' priorities were the number-one priority.
Good. All right, with that, we have Councilmember Betterfield, then Councilmember Capriolio.
Yeah, a couple things, uh, Thomas. You know, I'm concerned about a, a couple things that I heard from, uh, these folks. Uh, the gentleman said that there's inconsistent, um, uh...
Enforcement.
Enforcement going through the neighborhoods. I mean, he doesn't see anybody, and one, one of the women said that, uh, somebody's coming through there all the time. So, what, what's going on with, uh, this inconsistency in terms of enforcement?
I've been working with my parking supervisors and my team in the field to see where we are in terms of being able to get someone in that residential parking district at least daily, if not twice daily, while balancing that with the other areas in the hundred-and-twenty-plus square miles we're serving for both citation productivity as well as responding to Fresno calls for service. We've made some changes to it in the past couple weeks as a result of the community meeting, so that we're getting someone consistently in there twice a day, every day.
Throughout the entire district?
Yeah, throughout the entire residential parking zone. Right now, we've been with our enforcement focusing primarily on the areas you see in green, kind of in preparation for what this would look like, but we have someone in the district twice a day now since the past couple weeks.
But this gentleman is saying that no one's ticketing anybody that's parking in front of his, his house.
I can't speak to that. I can certainly review my citation productivity, but I do see it happening when I'm reviewing other productivity reports of where they are in the city.
Okay. And then, the other thing that I was troubled by is the, the last, uh, resident spoke about, uh, how poorly she's being treated by people in your department. Uh, three men, she mentioned three people and said they treat her poorly on the phone. What's going on with that?
I can follow up with the employees, and we can look at doing some coaching and training in terms of customer service skills, because that's certainly not the level of expect, expectation I would have for those employees and how they interact with the public.
Yeah, I think most of us feel the same way. I mean, whether we can help somebody or not, nobody should be treated as she's describing. I don't know, uh, if you followed up on that, but I, I would ask that that happen, uh, so that doesn't, yes, sir, did you want to come up and say something? If this gentleman can speak, Thomas.
So, we've all been telling him the same thing the entire time, and he's been saying the same thing. "Oh, we'll look into it. We'll retrain, this, that, and the other." And, uh, the behavior from those employees has gotten worse, uh, not better. So, they went from in the beginning not requiring, uh, that, uh, additional information, the description of the vehicles, to the last time I talked to them, they, they're flat-out refusing, denying service if we don't have that information. So, this is after several times of talking to him and trying to get him to understand that. And in fact, the whole time, I've been asking him to just listen to the recordings. I expected that they were recording, and, uh, it didn't come out until I had a conversation with Jennifer Clark and him. I had to have that meeting. I've talked to her and her associate on this, um, situation, and that, in that meeting, he said, "Oh, well, we don't record." So, the whole time I've been asking him to, uh, do, to listen to these recordings, he's never said anything about them not recording. So, they don't know what's going on and what's the behavior, and they don't trust the word of the residents. And there's many of us saying the same thing.
Well, City Manager, I don't know what you want to address about this, but this is, ma'am, you can come up too.
Last night, I went to visit, uh, a young couple, um, that live on Orchard, and I wanted to tell them, because they didn't come to the meeting, uh, what was going on and how they felt before I opened my mouth. And, um, she said that this was still a problem, as it still is, but she said, as far as calling in, we have been told that if we have a gathering during the day, uh, during the week, that we should call in and let them know how many cars may be there. And she did have something come up, and she was going to park her cars on the street and have her guests park in the driveway, but there were still going to be two or three. And so, she called to give them that information and who they were, what their license number was, and whoever she talked to, it's one of the people that these other, uh, residents have complained about, and I don't remember the name. But she says, "I'll take it down, but it won't do any good. I don't think they'll do anything, they'll, or they'll get tickets. It's out of my hands." This is the kind of stuff that we're having to deal with, and I know, uh, when there was a problem with another person parking constantly, I was told that if we continued to call, that we would be person non-grata, that they were tired of getting these calls, nothing could be done. It was just a person that continually, um, abused the system, and they weren't going to do anything about it. This is what we're dealing with.
This is, I mean, what I'm hearing is, is very troubling, and I know it's troubling to the entire council. I know Councilman Asparza is trying to address these issues, but thi- this kind of nonsense should never be going on, and, um, City Manager, I don't know, you know, I, I don't want to get really pissed off about this, but I don't like hearing any of this, and, and I'm not sure that, uh, Thomas is addressing the issue, at least according to these four folks. So, what are we going to do about this? Maybe, Jennifer, do you want to say anything about this?
I think we've already done something about it, um, and I'm getting mixed messages from the constituents about enforcement. I think the key is to enforce and, and deal with the problem and its root cause. However, we're, we're hearing that, uh, some residents would like more enforcement, some would like less enforcement. Two, two times a day is some pretty significant enforcement, um, but once again, it's not going to prevent all, uh, parking issues out there at two times a day. Um, as far as the, the employees and, and their rudeness, um, I think Thomas will address that, and, and we'll get to the bottom of that, but I think we need to do some investigation.
I think we would all be very pleased with two times a day, even once a day. It's not happening, sir. Not at all.
Thank you, Ms.
And, again, I'm going to encourage Mr. Asparza, Mr. Gaffrey, and somebody needs to contact Congressman Costa's office to address this issue to the VA in San Francisco. They're the only ones that are going to move the director here to do anything about the problem, and that's the veterans. We have helped people find places to park. This is not our job, but we have told them about the different parking places, and they're the ones that have told us they're full, and that's what moved us to go and find out how full they were. One day, there were two nursing students that were driving around our street. Pretty soon, they stopped, met in the middle of the street, and were talking. I was outside raking. I said to them, "Can I help you?" And they said, "We're new, we're students, we're in the nursing program, and we're late. We can't find a place to park." And I said, told them about the parking places. They said, "We called, and they, we were told we cannot park there. They're only for employees." This is ridic- This is ridiculous. Nobody's addressing these issues.
Thank you, Ms.
You're welcome.
Now the conversation's still with the council.
Well, yeah, I just want to just add that, um, I know that's, it's a complicated issue. I know Councilman Asparza, you inherited this, uh, but our, our constituents should never be treated as they're describing, Mr. Gaffney, and I really encourage you to address this and get this under control. When they call, they ought to, uh, get a respectful response. These are the folks, as we talk about all the time, paying all the bills, and, uh, that kind of crap should not go on.
Councilmember, I, I apologize for interrupting, but I, I was just consulting with the department director, and my understanding i- is a personnel issue that we're handling, and we can't talk about it publicly. But I appreciate that everybody bringing this to our attention as well, but we're, but the department's on it.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Well, thank you for, uh, reminding us that we shouldn't be discussing specific personnel matters publicly. With that, Member Carbossi and then Members Orio.
I have a question for Mr. Gaffney. How many people do we have in parking enforcement for the entire city right now?
Right now, serving the entire city, we have, um, sixteen and I believe and a half FTE. That's an, off the top of my head, a number, I apologize. Um, and...
But they're not always working at the same time.
Yeah, they're not, yeah, I have them on swing shift. I have some on weekends, so I don't have that number during the week. That's someone assigned to the council districts doing your Fresno responses as well as the folks on foot doing the meter enforcement downtown, and then I'm carrying, um, two and a half vacancies right now.
Okay, so at any one time, given also the other responsibilities, how many, on average, can you give me a number of how many people you think for the entire city are on at one time for parking enforcement?
Um, on, on at one time, you would have about five downtown and then six out in the metro areas in the council districts. When we're fully staffed, we're, are targeting to have someone in each council district every day, and that's doing, um, proactive enforcement and responding to Fresno calls.
Okay.
Um, we went from, in the past four months, we've, um, completely automated our Fresno process on iPads and went from closing requests somewhere between about eighteen days to closing them in under five days and having under a hundred Fresno requests open at any given time.
Okay. And the reason I ask that question, I'm trying to put this in perspective, because we're the fifth largest city in the state by population. By land area, we're sixth. We're about 2.4 times larger than San Francisco. So I'm trying to understand what appropriate number is, because, you know, when I hear the concerns of residents, I get concerned. And by the way, you wearing your Fresno State badge and shirt, it totally influences me. But, you know, it, this is, this, my job as a councilman really is a customer service job, and I think when we say we work for you, we mean it, but Thomas also works for you. The city manager works for you. We take that very seriously here. Now, I had a parking issue near a park and school in my district. I, my first week on the job, residents were angry, and I was getting angry. We were able to resolve that issue. It wasn't overnight, though, because there were structural problems, but Thomas helped me do that. So I hear your frustration. I'm frustrated, too, when things happen in my neighborhoods, and Nelson is one of the most empathetic council members there is, there, there, we have here. So he's going to be on this. We've got to get the VA to be more responsive to the impact in our neighborhoods. We love our veterans, hundred percent, but at the same time, we have veterans probably that live in your neighborhood, too. They're getting, uh, affected by this. Right. So I have a lot of confidence that my colleague, along with Mr. Gaffrey, who in my experience was very helpful to me in resolving this issue, this city has a pathway to get it done. I ask, you know, you be a part of that process, and we do hear you. Thank you.
Member Orio, and then Councilmember Capriolo.
Thank you. Um, just a couple of questions and just kind of comments. So from what I'm hearing, this is our largest parking district that we have in the city of Fresno. Okay? And, you know, I think, I, I share and sympathize with the residents that are here. You know, we've had very similar problems out in the Fresno City College area, and, you know, it's taken a few decades to try to get a permanent solution, but what makes it very interesting to me is that we actually created this parking district, which is the largest, but it seems like we haven't put the resources, um, that are needed, excuse me, um, to make sure that we're doing the proper enforcement, um, to alleviate, you know, the, essentially, the residents that live there. So my question, as we are kind of approaching, uh, more a few months before we start talking about budget and so forth, is this something that, um, is being looked at as part of your budget priorities and what you're going to be proposing to the city manager so that, um, it comes to the council?
I can answer that question. We look at every division's priorities as we move through the budget process, and a- any of, uh, that division's needs will be looked at. Um, I do want to follow up on, uh, Councilmember Carbossi's comment, though, and, um, just ask Thomas a question. Uh, from the perspective of your resources that you currently have, uh, how proportionally are you dedicating significantly more resources to that area than you at other areas?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
So then, it's probably looking at an issue of, um, getting, having greater capacity since we are very massive.
We will be looking at that relative to all the rest of the priorities of the city.
Perfect, but it seems like I would be supportive of looking at ways to, um, figure out in our budget to help alleviate some of this issue. I think that if we can build capacity with it, adding additional staff, I think that we should be looking at that, at least from my perspective. And I'm saying it publicly so that as you guys are putting together your budget, you know how many people and how many votes you'll have to be supportive of something like this. Thank you.
Councilmember Capriolo.
Uh, thank you. We, I think we have two issues. One is parking, obviously, and I, I haven't been involved in, in the community meetings, but is there a, a timing issue? If they do a thirty-minute sign or one-hour parking, would that be helpful in the neighborhood or not? I don't know if that's been, well...
There are several areas that have two-hour parking, and that means all day.
Okay. So, uh, that's out. So the second question or, uh, comment I have is it's really an enforcement issue. And, uh, for me, it's quite simple. Uh, five, uh, out of, how many parking people do we have? Is it five or downtown? And how many are in the balance, uh, rest of the city?
Um, five downtown and roughly six in the metro area. Again, I'd have to get you something more detailed. I didn't have that number off the top of my head. Um, and can I respond a little more detail to that time zone? Um, so you do have areas like along Clinton in front of Sam's Deli and so on. There's some of those areas that are time zones, and in some other cities, they do do residential zones stacked on top of time zones where it's permit required. If you're there, the more two hours or that kind of thing. But it's primarily in business districts, we have higher turnover, not something like this where the hospital is the activity generator. And then that takes even more of an enforcement burden, because you're going to have to chalk the vehicle and then come back after those two hours and cite it again. So that's why we did, I, that's why I wouldn't recommend that for this situation.
Very good. Thank you. So to me, it, again, it's not a, a rocket science question, and what do I mean by that? Without insulting anyone, five people downtown is overkill. I mean, I, my building is right, you know, three hundred, four hundred yards that way, two-hour parking in front. My lot is used by people that go to court, et cetera. Uh, but I think your office does a good job. To me, take one out of downtown, put it in that district. I swear to you and I assure you, I've been there, my brother was a United States Marine Corps veteran in Vietnam, and he was there sixteen months, so I'm very familiar with these issues and parking there and so forth. I actually had to park in the evenings because your issues are really relevant, and it worked out for me. But honestly, I, I think just pulling one person from downtown, uh, and putting them in that zone, it'll be enforceable, and then the word will spread, especially to employees, and then you can back it down a little bit if the residents feel that there's sufficient response from the city of Fresno. So, uh, I, I don't know if there's a motion or something we can do, uh, Member Asparza, but let's just take one and put them over there, and I'm telling you, this, it'll work.
You know, we will, we will work with Thomas to look at the best, um, way and part of the city to deploy his staff, and we, and we will look at the vision in terms of upcoming budget, uh, just as Jim said, so...
Thank you, City Manager.
You know, I appreciate that, but it, it's very, obviously urgent, and again, he reminded me, my brother's been gone three years, uh, as of March twenty-first. Um, and, uh, I, I really understand what you're saying, so I appreciate the bureaucracy and all the things we're talking about. How hard is it to assign a parking man there or a woman for an eight-hour shift? So that's my solution. If you guys choose not to adopt it, that's fine, but I think you...
Councilmember Capriolo, I, I think there's a motion to approve it. You would like to add a direction with that motion? I think that would be entertained by the maker of the motion.
Uh, that would be a, a friendly amendment?
Uh, so at this point, um, I'm not ready to dictate the, uh, you know, the exact personnel, where they're going to go without looking at the big picture. Uh, I mean, there's five, that, that does seem like a lot to us. It seems very disproportionate, uh, but I'd like to hear more from the administration, from Thomas, about our enforcement needs, uh, citywide before, uh, you know, before, you know, putting down a rigid policy in terms of folks, uh, where they're going to go. Uh, for me, I mean, again, we, you heard my first line of questioning in terms of, we created a district bigger than all others without adding any people. I mean, we were going to have issues, we were going to have resources stretched, so I think my first instinct is to add more resources, not to take away from enforcement and, uh, other parts of the city.
Thank you.
I would add, uh, my only concern there would be, let's have a response in thirty days.
So...
Add, add a player or not, you know? That's not rocket science, and if we can do it, these people will be satisfied. Uh, I think the hospital will be better served, the patients will be better served. When I visit my brother, I could at least visit during the daytime as opposed to evenings. Uh, but anyway, I tried.
So, Councilmember Capriolo, I appreciate your suggestions. Today is February twenty-seventh. Uh, I think, uh, you know, if we were serious about budgeting for this, I'm thinking, uh, probably May first, right? We have some solid idea. Again, half-time equivalent, full-time equivalent, two full-time equivalents, uh, you know, based on how you're deploying these folks and how much ground they can cover. Um, so we're close, not going to be thirty days, but I think, uh, sixty days is plenty of time to see how this, uh, these new boundaries shake out and how we can adjust personnel and add budget.
Okay. With, with that, um, just like to close up the conversation and, um, fi- finish with some closing comments. Just as a reminder to the council, um, about a year ago, the council directed a study of a potential parking authority that would separate the parking department to its own standalone government entity so that it could be more responsive and more innovative to the parking needs across the city. Um, about ten days ago, we received a consultant's report suggesting that everything was going great and that we should remain steady as we go and not make any changes. This, today's agenda, had a request for us to sell parking law that generates about a hundred thousand dollars of revenue a year from the parking department. Now we just heard there's not enough resources in the parking department to do enforcement of the largest parking di- district in the city. Um, so we're, we're hearing mixed messages on, uh, everything's going, is going great, let's not mess with the money, and we don't have enough money, um, while trying to make deals to sell our parking assets. Um, as a guy who represents downtown, I can tell you, there's plenty of enforcement here. Um, I can also tell you that we've made significant progress with the smart meters. My hope with the smart meters is that we would then be able to retract some of that, you know, person-to-person enforcement, given that the apps are able to, you know, do some improvements around extending your time. I, I would be fully supportive of redirecting parking enforcement resources to the largest parking district in the city, um, given that we now have smart meters in downtown, and they should require less manpower to monitor and oversee. Uh, with that, um, I'm going to defer to the council member that area, and it looks like he's trying to make some sausage out of this, you know?
Might I just make one comment?
Mm-hmm.
Um, first of all, the, uh, park, the, uh, tray memo and, and, uh, parking analysis came out, uh, mentioned those very improvements that you just mentioned, the smart meters and stuff like that. So I don't think we, I would characterize it as doing nothing. Uh, I think the consultant indicated that, uh, they don't see value in converting to a parking authority. Um, and those changes, those very changes that you are talking about are the ones that we're implementing. I think we're early on in the parking, uh, smart meter, uh, realm of things, and I would assume that as we move forward and, and we gain efficiencies there, we would redeploy. But keep, keep in mind, uh, we have a lot, uh, of city here to cover.
Yeah.
Um, you know, Paul, you have, uh, Councilmember, uh, Capriolo, you have a parking district in your area, and, and so we're, we're trying to balance where those people go. We're, we're more than happy to look at how to do that. Thomas has already worked with Councilmember Asparza to, to, uh, redeploy people in that area, uh, more so than we would have normally done. And, uh, based on the constituent input I'm hearing, uh, I'm hearing mixed messages there as to whether they want more or less enforcement. So I think, uh, we, we should move forward with, uh, Councilmember Asparza's initiative here, and, and, uh, Thomas can support that.
Thank you, Jim. I, I think what you're hearing from the council and the residents is we want better service, and we're leaving it up to you guys to improve the service.
Well, ca- ca- council president, that's very, uh, very generous of you. Your comments do hold weight with me. I mean, you, you represent the downtown area, uh, you know the area, um, and so I, I mean, hearing, hearing it from Councilmember Capriolo, who, you know, it was kind of a, you know, i- it was sort of arbitrary, but hearing it from council president who holds all those enforcement folks, um, the district, I, I am open to reallocating. Councilmember Carbossi, you have a question?
I didn't understand your comment, but I think it was complimentary. I'll take it as such.
Okay. Um, I actually want, I'm sorry. Go ahead. I want, okay. I want to agree with the motion maker, uh, Councilmember Asparza. Um, I like the conversation we're having. I like the fact that my colleague, the vice president, suggested a solution. Um, and I asked you guys earlier, you have been incredibly patient, and you've dealt with this for a long ti- ab- absolutely. Um, I think administration's hearing direction, they're getting a sense of how the council feels, not just Councilmember Asparza. But what I would like, I would ask you, I hate to ask you to be more patient, but give the councilman a chance to work with administration and resolve this issue, because we're going to talk about budget pretty soon, and there are other needs in your district, not just parking needs, but issues with infrastructure, public safety, parks, and that all drains from the same budget. I'd rather we look at reallocating resources like Councilmember Capri- Vice President Capriolio suggested, because it's revenue-neutral versus adding more personnel, uh, because that's going to take money away from core services in your neighborhood as well. So maybe we can come back to this, but right now, continue your original motion and what you suggested, um, because, you know, and, but I would like, and I think I heard this from administration, what my colleague, the vice president, suggested, is that something that's on the table right now?
I think we can commit to looking at deploying even more enforcement to that area, um, and see how it works. Um, I think it's going to be a fluid thing, and I, I do agree with Council Vice President, it might be helpful to ramp up for a bit and then slowly back off. Um, I think we can commit to that.
And that wouldn't cost more, but that wouldn't take more money.
We, we would redeploy.
Okay. Thank you.
Let, let, let's hear, just real quick, uh, give them...
So last comment before we take a vote. Go ahead.
The placards, whatever we do, if they have the placards that aren't their, theirs, they're, they belong to the people who buy them, it's not going to make any difference.
People are selling them, yeah.
They're selling them, they're getting them somewhere, or they're counterfeiting them. Something's happening, because none of those cars in front of my house live in that neighborhood. And I have pictures in the phone, pictures from the petition we did for two hundred signatures, no way these people live there.
Okay. It, it might be worthwhile, parking director, to look whether our new technology can just allow our parking enforcement to automatically validate that those cars have legitimate parking passes.
Thank you.
So I, I think there's a technology fix to that.
Um, you mentioned, um, Jim, sorry, um, that we're saying two different things. Um, I, I think that my, my neighbors are speaking to, um, homes immediately across from the Veterans Administration, and I'm talking about the north side of the district, um, where residents are being ticketed and nobody from the VA is, is parking up there.
Understood. I just, and I think, uh, Councilmember Asparza's, uh, um, resolution is, or amendment here is, is hoping to correct some of that. Is that correct?
That is correct. Mo- most of the yellow up here is on the, the north side. Um, you know, again, on, most of it north-south, uh, some of it going east and west on the most northern end. Um, I'm not sure exactly your, your address, um, but again, we're doing the best we can to balance, uh, the different things that we've heard. Uh, we don't want to go too far, uh, south with the amendments, uh, for fear of, uh, you know, impacting those neighborhoods with the, with the cars that were there prior. you know, impacting those neighborhoods with the, with the cars that were there prior.
And, and I think, uh, Thomas and I can talk, um, perhaps there's a more targeted area that we need to focus on, uh.
My concern is that with increased enforcement in the neighborhood, that it becomes a group of citizens that are, that see more enforcement, um, than other people in the city of Fresno. So, so you park for over 24 hours in one location, and you get a ticket, and you get cited, as opposed to focusing that enforcement on VA employees and guests that are, that are parking, um, that, just, just parking passes, as opposed to, um, a myriad of parking violations. Um, and then the second thing is, is if we wanna save money, there, you know, those media, media red covers on the, on the parking meters out there, why don't we just make covers for the signs, and we can do a temporary, we can do a temporary nine to, nine to four, nine to six?
Thank you for that. We did, we did try that, yeah.
I, I wanna be cautious about micromanaging this from the dais. Um, miss, we're, this is now a council discussion, we're gonna take a vote now.
Okay.
Um, thank you for the significant public input we've had in this conversation. There's a motion by, um, the councilmember Sparza, it's been seconded. Would you like to clarify your motion so we all know what we're doing moving forward?
Yes, so I think from what I've heard, I've heard some good suggestions, uh, different things from my colleagues and from the residents. Um, I think I, I do want to, uh, reevaluate in 45 days, that's probably an appropriate amount of time to, uh, evaluate the impact, uh, while also being, uh, you know, readily prepared for a, any budget changes that need to be made, uh, 'cause I know the budget rolls out, uh, bef- you know, well before we actually start deliberating it. Uh, so I think 45 days would be a, a good, uh, time, so I do wanna add that, uh, to the motion that we're gonna, uh, there's a memo from the parking division, uh, not necessarily a council workshop, but at least a, a memo, um, evaluating the impacts of what we have here, uh, today. And I am going to, for now, uh, trust the administration to, uh, in their word that they are going to look at, uh, ways within their, um, constraints to allocate more enforcement in the direction of, of the parking district. Uh, so I'll, I'll trust you folks, uh, on, on that, and we're not gonna have any language related to that, uh, until potentially, uh, the actual budgets, uh, time rolls around.
We'll work with your office on that.
All right, so the motion is to approve as recommended by councilmember Sparza, seconded by councilmember Chavez. We will get an update on this item in 45 days, that the administration will reallocate some enforcement resources to the largest parking district in the city. Any opposition to that motion, and second? Hearing none, it's approved. Thank you all for coming and educating us on the largest parking district in our city.
Thank you all for coming out, City Hall, appreciate it.
Next item is a workshop by our legal counsel on the Surplus Land Act. Um, for the council background, there's been some changes to state law that dictate how we, um, how we sell, um, public, how we dispose of public property. So it's gonna be a brief presentation so that we're all up to speed on the new requirements of state law when we dispose of public property that the city owns. You have the floor, legal counsel.
Thank you. Good morning, Council. Lori Favini with the City Attorney's Office, presenting today on changes in the law related to the Surplus Land Act. A new law went into effect at the beginning of this year. It now expressly applies to all cities, which includes charter cities. It applies unless we have an exclusive negotiating agreement or other legal binding agreement that was entered into on or before September 30th of this year, and if that's the case, then we fall under the provisions of the prior version of the Surplus Land Act, so long as the final disposition takes place by the end of 2022.
Do we know how many, um, exclusive negotiating agreements we have that apply, that need to be completed by 2022? Do we know?
I don't have that information.
We get that list from the administration?
Yeah, Lori, let's work together to determine which ones are out there. Yeah, we can, we can give you a list.
That would fall under, thank you.
Yeah, council, the ones that stand out would be the Tatillion one for the north end of Fulton, and then the other end of Fulton with, uh, Memet and so forth, cell phone.
Yeah.
I also think it would apply to the development agreements, correct? That were approved for the cash and developments, and a few other development agreements is, I think also the one on Armenian Town that's been out there for a while.
Right, so that would apply to, uh, disposition and development agreements, final disposition under those agreements would have to take place by the end of 2022 in order to fall under the prior version of the law.
Yes, I think it'd be great, though, just for our purpose to have a full list, so that we're just not saying, I think this and that, so it would be great to have a full list, thank you.
There are also, uh, requirements of the State Department of Housing and Community Development, HCD, and those go into effect the beginning of next year. So one of the new requirements is the council now has to take action in a public meeting to declare land surplus. Previously, this has been done at the staff level. The definition of surplus property has also been expanded, so more properties will fall within the act, and we'll get into this more in a later slide. The city is required to, um, prior to negotiating with a party for disposition of land, the city is required to send out a notice of availability to various local public agencies related to housing, um, and parks, and anyone who notifies the HCD of their interest in receiving such notices. Those agencies would then have 60 days to respond to the city to express interest in purchasing the land. So then prior to agreeing to terms for a disposition or entering into an agreement, the city would have to provide information to HCD about the notices that it did send out, and any negotiations that took place with those various agencies. Uh, the law prohibits deal terms that would, would reduce or disallow residential use, and the city has to maintain a listing of the properties that are, uh, disposed of, leased, sold, um, including the transferee and the intended use.
Can you say that again, about the limits related to housing?
It prohibits any deal terms that would reduce or disallow residential use. So the city is still able to, so this is the new law, and there's no case law, it hasn't been tested yet, but that is a provision directly from the law. It does say that the city is not prevented from zoning and, and other land use requirements, but the terms of the deal can't disallow residential use. We have yet to see what that means in practice.
Is it just for residential use? I know that one of the policy goals is to increase or create another tool to incentivize affordable housing development. I did notice, I was reading the law as it was proposed, it's, it included housing, open space, and something else, educational facilities.
Right.
So is this provision just specifically for, um, banning us from disallowing the housing component, or is it all three?
That particular provision relates to residential use only, housing only. So as I mentioned, the definition of surplus land has been expanded. Surplus land is defined in the statute as land declared surplus in a public meeting that is not necessary for an agency's use. And then agency's use is defined to include land that is being used by the agency, or planned to be used pursuant to a written plan adopted by the council. And then the statute defines what agency's use does not include, and that is commercial or industrial activities, including retail, entertainment, office, so the normal types of developments we see. Um, also property disposed of for the sole purpose of generating revenue or for investment. So typical development agreements then would fall under the Surplus Land Act.
So can, can you explain that in layman's terms? What does that mean? Like, what can we potentially declare surplus property for what purpose?
If, so if a property is currently being used by the city for a city use, or if we have a, if it's in the general plan or another city document that's approved by councils designating that use, then that is considered agency's use. If we have a property, on the other hand, that we, a developer approaches the city and wants to purchase a property for development, that would fall under the Surplus Land Act.
Does that include, like, the west area specific type of plans, the southwest specific plans, that those downtown plans, are those plans also considered as part of these written plans? Um, we have a Parks Master Plan, too, that sets forth where, you know, land that we own is designated as open space and so forth. I just wanna make sure that we're clear as to what is a written plan adopted by the council. I'm assuming, from my interpretation, it would be any of those types of plans, is, am I reading it correctly?
Counsel, I think we'll need to dig into each of those plans and get back to you with a memo on that.
Okay.
That be okay?
Perfect, and maybe ask the agencies that's gonna be reviewing us, I just wanna make sure, 'cause I know that there are penalties if we do dispose of a surplus, um, property in violation of this act. Thank you.
There is also exempt, uh, exceptions for exempt surplus land, that also has to be declared in a public meeting and supported by findings. This includes, um, things like remnant parcels or right-of-way that the city's no longer using that would be, uh, conveyed to an adjacent property owner.
So i- is that like, um, where we're gonna vacate a street?
Right.
And if it's a small parcel, then we just, um, go to the adjacent property owner? Is, is that in, in the form of sale, or in the form of no cost? That it would revert back to the pro- adjacent property owner?
It, the statute doesn't specify.
Counsel, it could depend. If we owned a street outright, then it could be through a sale, but if we have a street easement, and we vacate that easement, it automatically reversed the underlying property owner.
Got it, okay.
I think either way, it would fall under the exempt surplus land exception. Um, and then some of the requirements, as I mentioned, notices of, of availability must be sent out to various housing agencies, parks, districts, and anyone who notifies HCD that they want to receive the notice. Those agencies would then have 60 days to respond to the city. If the city does receive notice of interest, it must negotiate in good faith with those, one of those entities for 90 days, so the city's not required to actually sell the property to one of those entities, but we do have to negotiate in good faith for 90 days. And as mentioned, there are penalties for land sold in violation of this act, 30% of the final sales price for the first violation, and 50% of final sales price for any subsequent violation.
So what I'm listening is that we first have to designate it as surplus, then it goes to HCD, and HCD is the one that does the NOFA?
No, the city sends the, the notices. So first, it's declared surplus by the council, and then the city staff would send the notices of availability, and wait 60 days to hear back from agencies. If we don't hear from anyone, then the city can proceed with disposing of the property. If we do receive a notice of interest, we would negotiate with that party for 90 days, or more, if needed.
Now, the, the city did pass an ordinance last year, requires all, you know, disposal of public property to go through an RFP process, so.
Right.
If we were to declare ex parcel surplus, um, we go to the notice, public agency, if we get nothing, then we go to a public RFP where people potentially bid, right?
Right, right, and there's an exception in that ordinance for surplus property.
Okay.
So there is, okay.
What, what findings, what must we make to determine a property surplus?
Uh, that, well, so it's not defined, it's not set forth in the statute, it just says you have to make findings, but presumably it would be that it's not being currently used by the city, and it's not pla- it doesn't have a planned use in, in document that is approved by the council.
So a parking lot is a current use, and it's, I'm assuming parking lots are, are designated as public spaces, right? Public use?
If it's city-owned, yeah, city-owned par- parking lot being used by the city.
Yes.
Presumably, yes.
What, what's, what designations do, um, parking garages or parking lots have formally in, in the city?
What was the first part of that, I'm sorry?
What designation do they have? What's a land use designation that a parking garage or a parking lot that city owned and operated have?
That I do not know.
Like, what, like zoning and?
Zoning.
It's probably public, public property.
Public property. And that would be reflective in the general plan and the specific plan?
General plan and the zoning code.
Okay, all right. Any other questions from the council?
So do we have to, as a city, submit our process for determining what is a surplus or not, because I know that the current statute doesn't indicate that, but we've had some kind of process, it's been done by the staff before, without coming to council, so does that have to be approved by HCD, or what? 'Cause I thought that that's what I had to read.
So our prior, so now that the law's in effect, the council will declare it surplus at a public meeting, and then we send the notices. So before the city moves forward with a sale, we have to send HCD our, information on our process. So the notices we sent out, and any negotiations that took place. It doesn't say that we have to include the reso or anything declaring it surplus.
What's a criteria that the city staff currently uses to determine a property surplus?
Um, I can give you a couple of examples, but, but typically, I, I won't say anything specific, but typically, we look at what properties we have available, whether or not we're using them for any purpose whatsoever. If, um, uh, we think a department may need it, we may bring the department in to talk about what that is, we'll talk to our real estate agent, and then, you know, we, collectively as a group, under the mayor's authority, we look and determine if it's surplus or not, or if it's some, is something that we should list for sale, or, or declare surplus land through council.
Okay, cool, thank you. Member Carbasi?
Thank you. Um, by the way, this, so this isn't, doesn't just apply to the city, this also applies to municipal districts, water districts as well?
Right.
Okay, I don't know if this is an appropriate question for you or for staff. Did the state of California, or any entity, entity reach out to our city to see what the impact that this act was gonna have on us, or did they just pass this? Was there any effort made from Sacramento at all? Okay. Um, the reason why I ask that is, I.
Biggest cities, that's why you question.
We, we just had a session about a parking issue, where we got a problem, we said together, how can we solve this, and the vice president made a, made a practical suggestion. This, I don't think this is a practical solution to a problem. It's true, we are in a housing crunch, we are in a housing crisis in this state, but this is just more overreach from Sacramento. You know, 95% of Californians live on 5% of our land. It's not a land issue, it's a supply issue. Um, now, one thing I think that might help, and I, maybe someone from Sacramento's listening, if we can reduce some of these mandates and regulations on these homes, that gets passed on to the consumer. What I would love in my district is to have more starter homes, more affordable homes, so a young family or, or a single person can purchase a home and build equity so they can purchase another home in the future. Unfortunately, we're at a point where Sacramento's solution isn't really much of a solution, it's just more regulation for local authorities, more headache for our legal counsel, and more headache for administration, and me as a council member, having to deal with the housing crisis. So that's really all I have to say about that. Thank you for the update.
Thank you. Um, I, I think the council took the first step last year to give some more transparency and, um, scrutiny to the disposition of public property, and Sacramento looks like they followed through and made that standard, um, the case for everyone, irrespective of whether it's charter cities or not. So, uh, thank you for the time, uh, this concludes the presentation, discussion on this workshop, and we will officially go on lunch break and be back at 1:30. Counsel, would you like to report out what we will discuss in closed session?
Counsel, I might suggest that we do unscheduled communication before that, so then we won't have to come back out.
All right, I have one unscheduled communication. Mary Padilla? All right, she's no longer here, so unscheduled communication is now closed.
Uh, so to announce the closed session?
Yes.
Uh, we have, uh, public employee performance evaluation and negotiation for city clerk, as well as city attorney. Also, uh, City of Fresno versus Shell Oil, and also real property negotiation concerning the listed APNs.
Thank you, we are adjourned at 11:44.